Good afternoon, welcome to the November 4, 2020 virtual hearing of the Board of Zoning Appeals. In a moment, we will commence the call of our calendar, a copy of which can be found on the meeting webpage of the Board of Zoning Appeals. As noticed, this is a virtual hearing conducted on the Zoom platform. Applicants and other interested parties may participate by utilizing the interactive Zoom hearing link found on our meeting webpage or by utilizing the address www.brookhaven.ny.gov/join. When attending, please be sure to identify yourself by name and case number so that we may be able to determine which application you wish to speak on. The Q and A and chat functions on the program can be utilized. Should you have any questions, which will be answered by our staff. Again, thank you for attending this virtual hearing. Applications before the board will consist of reports, the presentation of the applicant, the testimony of those wishing to speak on the application, and finally, the rebuttal testimony of the applicant, limited to those issues brought on by persons speaking in opposition. At the conclusion of each of the presentations, this report will take one of three actions. We can decide the case today by a motion to grant or to deny the relief requested. Alternatively, we could close the public hearing and place a matter on our decision calendar. Finally, we can hold a public hearing open to a future date. If the motion that you hear at the end of your case is a motion to grant the application, what this means, at least important, is that the relief that you seek from this board has been granted. A grant letter will issue from the Board of Appeals Office within seven to 10 business days. It will be sent directly to the applicant. That is a document that you return to the Building Department with to continue with your endeavor. If the motion that you hear at the end of your case is a motion to close the public hearing and place a matter on decision calendar, what this means is that your public hearing was held today. And the record is now closed. The board has 62 days under the code in which to render a decision. Once that decision is rendered, the applicant will be notified directly. Those interested in viewing a copy of the decision can do so by accessing it off of the town's website under the calendar and agenda links for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Once that decision has been filed with the town clerk. And finally, the motion that you hear at the end of your case is a motion to hold the public hearing open to a future date. This occurs when either an applicant has not met conditions precedent into the relief sought from this board or more commonly where the board requires additional information before we could decide the application. In this instance, the public hearing record is held open to a future date. On that future date, the required information is made part of the record and then the matter closed for decision. I want to acknowledge receipt of notice documents for each of the applications pending today, which have been made part of the record and are contained in our files. And the course of your presentation as an applicant, please provide the board with any testimony or exhibits you wish to be made part of the record for the board's consideration. If you are not the applicant here today, but someone wishing to speak on an application, we will promote you as a participant at the conclusion of the applicant's presentation. Opposition testimony before the board will have the same opportunity to provide testimony and exhibits for the board's consideration. We ask only whether it's more than one person or neighbor speaking on an application that you do not repeat with someone before you are said, just please indicate to us that you agree with that prior point or that prior testimony and then move on to issues not yet covered by prior speakers. I want to thank you for your attention, please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Stands one nation, under God, indivisible, just for all. Good afternoon again, welcome to the November 4, 2020 session of the Board of Zoning Appeals. May we have roll call?
Board members, James Mazzarella.
Present.
Charles Lazarus.
Present.
Rick Cunha.
Present.
Ronald Lindsay.
Present.
Howard Berksen.
Present.
Deputy Chair James Wisdom. James Wisdom.
I saw Mr. Wisdom here just a short time ago.
Present.
I'm present.
Chairman Paul DeChance.
All right. And President, I understand that we have one postponement. I'm sorry, one request to withdraw off the holdover calendar. We'll take that motion now.
Yes, case number 26 originally of September 9, 2020, Ryan McGann requesting withdrawal.
Motion by Mr. Wisdom, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
The opposed motion carries, with that said, then we will commence this hearing with case number one.
Sherry and Kevin Costello, 133 Evergreen Avenue, Medford. Property is located on the east side of Watch Hill Avenue, 100 feet south of Olympic Avenue, Medford. Applicant requests rear yard and side yard variances for proposed in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Chair, I have a Sherry and Kevin Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. I'll wait for them to be promoted in the, while we're waiting for them to be promoted. Do we have surveys for this application?
We do.
Hello, thank you for your time today.
All right, I see, I see, is it Mr. Kevin Costello? I see you, sir, I'm hearing a female voice, is that person with you?
We are not together.
All right, let me, let me look for.
Sherry.
Oh, I see you right here, okay, very good. I'm going to ask you just to please, both please give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
As well, that's true, proof to hold it up, but to help you.
I do.
Very good. And Ms. Costello, were you going to be the one that is going to present to the board here?
Sure, that will be fine.
All right. Then the board, I want you to know is familiar with the application. You are proposing a pool to be installed, an in-ground pool to be sold at your property. And you, as a result, are seeking setbacks, variances for setbacks, both in rear and side yard. Tell us about why you chose the setbacks that you're here for and how they compare to your neighborhood.
So we chose the setbacks because it will accommodate the space from our homes stepping outside. And it, it does also accommodate for space on either side of our fences in that corner for safety purposes and some offset from the neighbors and their property. We do have some neighbors surrounding us that have in-ground pools, but to be honest, I am not aware of you know, that how that was determined on their behalf. I tried looking at some Google Maps and there's a lot of tree cover.
All right, as you can see, Mr. Vega is pulling up an aerial of your parcel for the board to get some familiarity with it. Mr. Costello, did you have anything to add? All right, I'm not hearing that you do, I'll take questions from the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Berksen.
So ma'am, the pool is in the corner behind the patio or the proposed pool. It does look like you have more room to the other side towards the closed street, Washington Street. I'm just wondering why you, you know, you put it there, you put it where it is. Or you're proposing to put it where it is.
The proposal to put it in that corner is primarily for safety with our children and the fence entrance, I wouldn't want anybody to come in and be walking directly in towards that fence. It would allow also for better yard maintenance and an opportunity to house the the pool equipment in a space that is logical and makes sense, which could then also be you know, plumbed and electric in that area.
All right, so do you, you have some neighbors, right, behind you and to, to the left facing your house? Have you spoken to them about the, the pool?
No, I did provide notice and I do have the sign posted. I have spoken to the one neighbor briefly, we had trees taken down. You know, and we discussed, we updated our fence just prior to, to the survey being completed to make sure that all of that was, was in its best condition. But I did not, I did also speak the home behind us. I, it's possible the people who live there are renting. The gentleman who owns it, I did speak to him about his pool and some of the decisions that he made about where to place it and those things, but we didn't have a direct conversation with regard to today.
No, none of those people have raised any issues about the location of the pool?
No, no, nobody has expressed any concern.
So I just would point out just one thing, the fence that runs along the backyard, that fence is off your property, it may be your neighbor's fence for all I know. My point is that the seven foot that you are requesting runs from your property line, not from the fence. So just be careful about that because you're liable to be back here again if you measure from the fence.
I do understand.
If the board acts favorably on your application.
Thank you for that. We will be very mindful of the property line and, and the ruling that you guys give today to make sure that we fall within the appropriate space there, thank you.
Okay, I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Berksen, is there anything further from the board? Mr. Vega, do we have anyone wishing to speak on the application?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a speaker for this application, no.
All right, then does the board have a motion?
Chairman, I move to prove the application is submitted type two.
That motion is by Mr. Berksen, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, at this time I'm going to sign off.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, be well.
Bye bye, you too.
Case number two, Peter D. Dancona, care of Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson. Properties located on the south side of Estate Road, 360 feet west of Union Avenue, Center Riches. Applicant requests side yard variance for proposed in-ground swimming pool and permission for said swimming pool to be located less than the required 25 feet from overhead wires, 13 feet. Also rear yard variance for existing roof over patio.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Vega.
I apologize, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Thank you. I've been waiting for Mr. Malguanera to be promoted. I just want to say any, there are attendees without case numbers associated with your names. Please rename yourself with your name and the case number to which you wish to speak on so that we can pull, bring you up and promote you to speak when, when we call that case. So Mr. Malguanera, are you with us now? Yes, you are. Good to see you, let me ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney.
As well, to help you.
Yes. All right, then we'll start with your appearance for the record, please.
Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson, agent for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Malguanera, this is a pool application also, what would you like to tell us specifically?
All right, so the pool, as you can see, not a tremendous pool, just fits the property nicely, 12 by 22. Not going for a big setback. It, it, just 13 feet on the side, we would have went with the 15 feet, but as you can see on the survey, the septic system is there in the back, so that's, you know, as far from the property line as we can go. And as far as the wires go, we have the hot stick test and we submitted to you. The roof over in the back, again, not, not a tremendous ask, it is in there since April. Owner didn't, didn't realize and falls in line with the characteristics of neighborhood. Most houses are, had the similar setback as that roof over. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Yes, hey Andrew, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good, pretty good. So, okay, um, that was going to be my first question in regard to the location of the pool. Cause I see the, I see the septic cover on the drawing there. And I guess the only thing that would provide a little bit better setback, although you had the same, you know, well, you have 15 and 13. We gain a little more in the back if it was a smaller pool, but you're still dealing with the, with the 13 feet on the side. So I don't know if that would be really a, a solution anyway. How, how are the neighbors to your, to the side and the back where the pool is located? They, I see it as, was it like a, is that like a drive?
Yeah, it's like, it's a long, so yeah, long drive behind, so there's no, it's a property, but it's more or less a driveway behind the, yeah, behind us.
Okay, and to the side, can we go back, Anthony? Thank you. And so to the side, you would say Estate Road. Then the front, now you have one neighbor, looks like it has a pool also, correct?
Correct.
The 12?
Correct.
And no issues or concerns from him?
I've had no correspondence with either neighbor, I think, I think, I don't think anyone has a problem with this.
Okay, and obviously the lines that are running probably run right through the back of his yard too. Looks like his pool is a lot closer to the property line than your proposal here.
Correct.
The roof over, um, so that, that roof over is, does that come off the first story?
Uh, yeah, it was over, there's a stone patio off the first story. And just covered, yeah, provide shade for the patio that they have.
And it's just a, it's just an extension off, off of the building with pillars or how's that?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so you have six-foot stockades. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mazzarella, is there anything further from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lazarus.
With the permission of Mr. Mazzarella?
Of course.
I have a query for you, Mr. Malguanera.
Sure.
I did a little study and I rotated that pool 90 degrees. And it will give you a larger rear yard setback further away from the lines. And it will avoid the septic cover, which is to the west and it will do nicely. Perhaps you might get your client to reconsider that. And it will be rectilinear alignment and I really propose that you consider it.
I absolutely understand where you're coming from. I, I know that they kind of fit this, this pool, as you see, it's 12 by 22 pool, it's not, it's not a big pool at all. They kind of got this pool to fit this spot because they did all, they, you know, they tried to avoid, you know, as much as variance as they possibly could and did a pretty good job with the, with the rear yard setback, so it's only, it's only really a side yard and, you know, to even turn it, it's just, it wouldn't fit, it wouldn't look as well, you know, for, for their purposes of their yard.
Well, from an aerial view, as we all sometimes think of in, in design, and we never consider what it looks like when you're standing on the ground. Right. From my aesthetic point of view, I think it would be much better if you rotated it. But that, of course, is your client's decision, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus, is there anything further from the board? Mr. Vega, do we have any speakers on the application?
Mr. Chair, I don't have.
The chair, sorry, I was having difficulty.
Mr. Cunha, yes.
Uh, Mr. Malguanera, just one question I have for you. Because of the position where you're putting the pool.
Yeah.
Your covers is, we, I got to applaud you, you put the covers on there and I'm really, yeah. An extension I have for you is that it looks like even if it was an eight-foot diameter tank underneath, you're going to be within five feet of that pool wall. Have you cleared that with the health department and their setbacks?
Not as of yet, we don't have the approval, but we will get an engineer report and of the like that we need in order to, you know, install this properly if it all looks flavorably on us.
No, it's just because you're, I believe, if I don't have their rules in front of me at the moment, but I believe you need a minimum of 10 feet from their septic tanks or their actual leaching pools, because we don't know which one that is. I just, I would advise you to be very, very careful.
Yes, we will, we will definitely make sure this is done properly, so we'll have to clear it. No, absolutely.
Okay, no further. No further comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha, was there anything further? Does the board have a motion?
Grant the application as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
And that says a type two action motion by Mr. Mazzarella, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Case number three, Claire and Edward Curran and Jennifer and Christopher Pop, 20 Millbury Lane, Center East. Property is located on the southwest corner of Millbury Lane and Marblestone Lane, Center East. Applicant requests rear yard variance for proposing ground swimming pool to be located in the required front yard, Marblestone Lane, not permitted. Also side yard variance for existing shed.
Mr. Chair, I have a Dieter Specter for the applicant.
Very good. Mr. Spect, we see that you have a window, but I don't have video or audio yet.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Oh, we can hear you, and how about, how about video, can you do that for us?
How about now, guys, nothing?
Not yet.
Christine, I need you here right now.
Well, I'm, dear, I'll give you this, we are very familiar with your voice, so I don't know that I need the, the, the video. I'm just going to ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Spect, then we, we're, we are now three for three with pools. This is another pool application, we do see, this one is slightly different because it's asking for, for your variance, but most of the pool appears to be to the rear foundation of the house. So what do you want to tell us specifically here?
Well, the yard is a little, it's not very deep and the windows and the doors leading out of the back of the house give a very good view of the location where we want to put the pool. And that's where, for safety reasons, where the client wants to put it. And I don't feel like it's going to impact the neighborhood in the slightest bit, so.
All right, then, questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wisdom.
So Mr. Malguanera, I see you're 25 feet from the Marblestone Lane, your fence off of Marblestone Lane. And it's holding the 10-foot off the corner of the, of the dwelling and 10-foot off the rear fence line.
All right.
Are there any other pools in the neighborhood that look like that from the aerial? I do see pools, but I don't see, I do see a couple that are close to the rear fence line.
We, we couldn't get that information. Normally I can get that, but I don't have that information with us, I'm sorry, I don't.
Looking at the aerial, I do see a few pools that are close to a house and also close to the fence line, so. And even across the street from this dwelling, there are like one, two, three, four, five, maybe six, seven, eight pools in their backyard, so this, would you say conforms to the neighborhood?
Yes.
I have nothing further.
All right, Mr. Spect, was there anything further that you have for us?
Well, there is a, isn't there a shed in there?
There is a shed there, Mr. Wisdom, yes.
All right, and how long has that been there?
Since the homeowner bought the house, so I don't know when they bought it, but they've had it, it's been there for a number of years.
And it's, it's holding the three foot six on the, on the fence line.
Yes, that's correct.
And there are sheds in the neighborhood, I can see from the aerial, I have nothing further.
Is there anything further from the board? Mr. Spect, I see boxes to the, on the Marblestone Lane, frontage of the house, next to the house. Is that supposed to show us pool equipment?
That's correct, yes.
Were you, did you advise building, would, would you advise that you need a, a variance for pool equipment in front yard? Or is it because it's a secondary front yard, they're not considering it?
We showed them this, but I don't think they made a note of it.
I know we have an application coming, just one or two ahead of pool equipment in the front yard. So Ms. Ricardi has just told me that there is a recent change in the manner in which these are dealt with at the Building Department and I guess some may have been in before, so I'm going to, we'll take this the way it is. And certainly if you need any further relief, you'll come, you'll come back to us.
Okay.
Mr. Vega, do we have any one wishing to speak on the application?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any speakers at this moment.
All right, and in terms of the front yard nature of it, again, I see that most of it is behind the house. Was there any obstacle to the balance of that land behind the rear foundation that would have caused you not to put the pool there? Is it just, is this a preference of the applicant or was there another reason?
It's preference, they're looking at a fence in the pool as well and they're just trying to put the pool in a situation where the fence line is not going through the middle of the door of the house. So there's a fence running from the, from the house to the rear fence.
All right, thank you. If there's nothing further from the board, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant the application type two.
Backing.
Motion is by Mr. Wisdom, seconded by Mr. Mazzarella, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Case number four, Clara and Albelio Martins, care of building permits plus 19 Stillwood Road, Brookhaven. Property is located on the north side of Club Court, 130 feet east of country, Greens Drive, Holtsville. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing one-story accessory storage building located in the required side yards.
Mr. Chair, I have a Jason Allen for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, I see that you've been promoted. There you go, we have video, can you just put your audio on, sir? All right, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Very good, let's just start with having you sworn.
As always, we're to the truth, the whole truth, the whole truth.
So help me God.
Very good, Mr. Allen, we'll take your appearance for the record, please.
Jason Allen, building permits plus for the applicant.
And what would you like to tell us here?
This shed, storage shed, has been there since 2005. It is 193 square feet. Part of it is a doghouse, 64 square feet, the part that juts out is actually a doghouse. And I submitted some pictures showing that. I don't know if you guys have them.
We do.
And if you look closely, you can see where the cutout is for the dog to go in and out. It's full of all kinds of, like I like to say, stuff.
All right, so, so Mr. Allen, you filed the application on behalf of the applicant. While you, while you referred to the structure as a shed with us today, you filed for one-story accessory storage building. Why was that?
Um, that's just the way the denial was written up, I guess. Rob wrote it up that way, I, I don't know why.
All right, I mean, but, but in, in the manner in which we deal with structures, this is a shed.
Yes, sir.
There's no, no, no heat source in it, no plumbing?
No heat source, no plumbing.
And it's used to store household items.
Right.
So it's a shed in the required side yard.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I cut you off, you said you think probably what?
Probably because that's what it says on a survey, it says, uh, storage building.
Ah, so did you ask the surveyor why he's calling it a survey, a stucco building, storage building?
No. It was the survey that we used was done in 2013 and probably because it's full of stuff.
All right, I'm not sure if, if that's the definition for a storage building.
I took two pictures.
Because it's full of stuff.
Okay, I took two pictures of what's in it. And if you take a look at those, you'll see that it is.
It's a shed.
Yes.
All right, it's 18 by three and by 12 by three irregular, is that, is that what the structure is?
Yes, it is.
All right, and the, the, the required side yard and location of it, does that compare favorably to this particular neighborhood?
Yes, it does.
All right, I see a lot of entries and to the, to the home, including what appears to be maybe access windows, is this an owner-occupied dwelling?
Yes, it is.
And is there a rental?
No.
Okay, very good. Is there anything further from the board on the application? I'm going to move to grant the application for 12.3 by 18.3 irregular shed in the required side yard as a type two action. Is there a second? Motion seconded, made all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Case number five, William and Dolores Savage, 69 Bay Avenue, Ronconcomah. Property is located on the southeast corner of Fourth Street and Bay Avenue, Ronconcomah. Applicant requests front yard setback variance from Fourth Street and rear yard variance for proposing ground swimming pool located in the required front yard, not permitted. swimming pool located in the required front yard, not permitted. Permission for said pool to be located less than the required 25 feet from overhead wires, 19 feet. Front yard setback variance from Fourth Street for proposed pool equipment located in the front yard, Fourth Street.
All right, Mr. Vega, are you promoting the applicant? Do we have an applicant?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, were you speaking to me?
Yes, do we have an applicant here?
I'm sorry, I had a little audio problem. I have Dieter Speck for the applicant, and I have the applicant, Mr. William Savage.
All right.
I apologize for that.
No, no, no problem at all. Well, I see Mr. Speck will have his audio, we'll have him put his audio on now. In terms of this application, when you are able, can you just pull up a better, the portion of the survey where the pool is, and then I think would be interested in the, in the aerial on this. Mr. Speck, you are back with us, is that correct?
Hi, guys. How are you? Thank you.
I think that we have Mr. Savage here. Just want you to know, Mr. Savage is with us. I have, don't have video on either of you, but Mr. Speck, you've previously been sworn, so if you start with your appearance for the record, and then you could present this one.
My name is Dieter Speck. I live at 10 Honey Court, Bohemia, New York.
All right, this is another corner lot, and you have a request on behalf of the applicant. What is that?
Looking for to be 13 off the rear, 15 off of the side, which is also the front property line. We submitted a approved hot stick letter from PCG based on the location of the pool. I believe you have a copy of that in your records.
I believe that, that that's the case. Mr. Carty is looking now. Yes, we do.
Okay, tight yard, and there's a septic system that we're trying to stay away from, or we will be staying away from by putting the pool in its location. We can't really put it any other place but, but this place. And I feel it's going to affect the quality of any of the neighbors. It's just it's behind a fence, and it's going to make the backyard beautiful.
All right, seeing this, this application, you were denied for front yard for pool equipment. So this was the application, they both just happened to be yours. So I just, I'm pointing that out to you for the possibility that you're going to have some issues with the other one. And we do see that this pool is almost holding the same setback as the residents from its secondary front yard, which is Fourth Street. So there was at least an attempt to put the pool behind the house. I'll ask the board for questions.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kuni.
Good afternoon, Mr. Dear, how are you?
Good, guys.
Okay, um, the, what is the dimensions on this pool, if you don't mind me asking?
Of course, one second. The overall 25 is the overall length of the longest part of the pool wall. The deep end is 12 feet wide. So it's basically 12 by 25, and then it has an L, which is about seven by five and a half feet. So the main part of the rectangle is 12 by 25. So it's not, not a large pool at all.
I, I, the reason I'm asking is because you just answered my question. You are six feet from the foundation of the home with that pool, and you're putting the deep end there. There may be an issue with the stability of the soil next to the house.
If that's, I'll talk to the homeowner about that, but the worst case scenario is I would put a helical piling to the pool wall in that area. But
Your concern is actually not the pool wall itself, it's actually the house wall. Undermining, undermining the house.
I understand that. I built pools in Brookhaven Town just last year in Ridge, which I needed variance for, and the pool was six feet off the property line. And the pool wall, when you build a pool wall, the wall itself is concrete, and it's only going down three and a half feet in the ground. So then it turns into a hopper which rolls away from it. So I'm not going to be undermining the pool and, at all. In Nassau County, I built many pools closer to the property line than that, and
I'm not referring to the property line, I was actually referring to the foundation of the home.
Foundation, I built pools to the foundation. I've never had an issue.
Okay.
And my engineer will give a letter on that as well.
Okay, just making you aware that it's quite close. Are there other pools in the neighborhood that are similar to the, this in the side yard and with the same rear yards?
I'm not familiar with any in the area. I just wasn't, I did not have access to that data to get that information during, with the way the building department is running right now, to be honest with you. I can't get a call back, and I'm asking questions and calling ZVA. It's a little tough.
Okay. Do we have an aerial, Anthony? Yeah, I don't see.
The odds are all tight. So really, anybody that's doing a variance, anybody's building a pool is most likely going to need a variance in this neighborhood.
Okay, I was just seeing if there was anything that was supportive there. Okay, all right, no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kuni. Is there anything further from the board? Mr. Vega, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Mr. Charity, I don't have a speaker this time.
I'm sorry, Mr. Vega, I didn't hear that. So we don't have a speaker? Other than, other than the applicant. And I'm sorry, Mr. Speck, I didn't ask. Apparently, we have Mr. Savage with us. Did you wish, was there, was there an intent to speak on behalf of the variances that he wants, or do you think he's just here to?
I think he's just curious.
Oh, Mr. Savage, yes, we can see you now, sir. Did you wish to speak to the board on the application? Okay, so he can't hear us. I'm assuming he was here just to, just to take note of what the process was. If there's nothing further from the board, we have no one wishing to speak. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair, grant the application as presented type two.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Kuni, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Case number six, Adrian and Timothy Blank, 71 Bauer Avenue, Manorville, located on the east side of Bauer Avenue, 541 feet south of Frontier Trail, Manorville. Applicant requests side yard variances for existing shed and proposed generator.
Mr. Chair, I have a Dana Bush for the applicant.
Thank you. All right, there you go, Ms. Bush. We see that you
Am I on?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you for attending. Let me ask you, just please give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
So it's worth all the proof of the whole.
Yeah.
I'll start with your appearance for the record, please.
Dana Bush, 41 Whittier Avenue, Medford, New York.
Thank you.
For Tim and Adrian.
Very good. What would you like to tell us here?
We're going for the bigger shed in the back and the generator. The shed has been there 15 plus years. It's only about seven feet in height, 200 square feet. Sorry, something crazy just happened on Finding Nemo. It's six feet off the property line. It's very heavily wooded in Manorville. I did submit an aerial, but you can't really see anything. I submitted lots of pictures. You could tell it conforms with the backyard. The generator is technically proposed. It is in that location, but it's not hooked up yet. We're just waiting for the zoning board, and then we can go ahead and have the plumber hook it up. So we, we left it at the 11 feet because if we went any further to closer to the house, it would be right in front of the gate. So we can't, we didn't want it to be walked in on. So it's in that location.
All right, thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Lindsay.
Good afternoon, ma'am. How long has this shed been there?
15 years.
15 years. Very heavily wooded area out there?
Yes. I did submit the aerial, you can't even see the house.
Yeah, see that? Other sheds in the area that have that property line, holding that property line?
I did try and show you, but um, a lot of, I did, I drove up and down Bauer, and a lot of people do have sheds, but I couldn't get any good pictures of them.
Okay, okay, and the generator, is there an issue, do any of the neighbors have an issue with the generator?
We have one neighbor who had a question. He came over, and the homeowner showed them the location, and they talked about it, and he no longer has a problem. He just had a couple of questions.
Okay, okay, what kind of generator is it?
Um, ooh. I did submit all the plans. Hold on one second, let me just grab them. And it's a little chaotic over here.
No problem.
It is a Honeywell 60HZ air cooled generator.
Okay, all right, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay. Is there anything further from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lazarus.
Young lady, you did say that this generator is in place, it's been installed?
It has not been installed. It is in that location, but it is not hooked up in any way.
But it's set on the ground?
Yes.
Does it sit on a foundation?
Um, not yet.
I see.
We didn't know if we were going to have any problems or not, so we wanted to just wait.
Well, I was just going to do my usual thing and say rotate it, and you'd be further away from, from the side yard. And it wouldn't affect it anyway, in any way with respects to your wiring or any of your turnups to get to the base of the machine, but that's my comment.
If we rotated it, I don't know if we'd still, it wouldn't have the 20, they said I need a 20 foot setback for it.
Well, if you rotate it to the, you'd be parallel to the side yard, it's closest to, it'll be further away from the, from the property line, which is one of the things that you're trying to achieve.
I will definitely talk to the homeowner about that. I don't know if it's going to be very hard to move. I don't think so. But I think right now is where they would like it.
Was there anything further, Mr. Lazarus?
Nothing.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the board on the application? With regard to this structure, is there any issue with the, the present covenant, 43% lot clearing? That is on, that's been imposed on the parcel? Does the existence of the structure violate that clearing limitation to your knowledge?
No.
All right.
We actually also went to the planning board for the clearing limit.
We do see that. All right, if there's nothing further from the board, I'll ask for a motion.
Yes, Mr. Charlie, to grant the applicant who is presenting.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay, was to grant the application as a type two action. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
Oh, I apologize. Nope, I don't have a speaker. I thought I did.
All right.
Case number seven, DPRO Fiona LLC, care of building permits plus 19 Stillwood Road, Brookhaven, located on the south side of Collin Drive, not open, 95 feet east of Kingsland Avenue, Shirley. Applicant requests lot area, lot frontage, and minimum and total side yard variances for proposed one family dwelling on a 50 foot lot.
Mr. Chair, I have a Jason Allen for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Vega, can you tell us now, do you, do you see any speakers on this application?
I do have a speaker on this application.
All right, we'll wait for Mr. Allen to be promoted. Mr. Allen, we see that you're back. You've previously been sworn. Let's start with your appearance for the record, please.
Jason Allen, building permits plus.
Thank you. And the record should reflect that this matter was reviewed by the board's planner, Christopher Reed, who is here today to testify us to his findings with regards to the application. Mr. Doyle, can we swear, Mr. Reed, in please?
I do. And the property is located on the south side of Collin Drive, 95 feet east of Kingsland Avenue in Hamlet, Shirley. And the applicant proposes to erect a two-story dwelling on the 10,890 square foot parcel with access intended via Collin Drive, which is not improved at this time. Property is located in the A1 district, requiring a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet, and the lot does not conform to the A1 lot area requirement. And the area was upzoned in 1989 by the town board, increasing the lot area needed for residential dwellings with goals, including, but not limited to groundwater and surface water preservation, and limiting the burden on public facilities and infrastructure with increased density. And the applicant apparently acquired the property in 2017. There are a total of 32 improved residential lots within the 500 foot radius. 12% or four lots have both lot frontage and area conformance with the application, which does not conform with the surrounding development pattern. It is noted that the Board of Appeals heard an application to develop Lot 20 on the radius map, which was denied. Chapman, case number two of June 27, 2001. Subsequently, the applicant was granted permission to refile an application, which was approved on July 12, 2006. The board also approved a 50 foot lot depicted as Lot 7 on the radius map, stemming from an application known as Emmanuel Development Corp., case number 31 of May 14, 2003. Acknowledging the prior approvals, there are inherent differences with the previous approvals and the current endeavor, which is the adoption of the 2013 Commons River Conservation and Management Plan, and the 2014 expansion of pine barrens at the subject parcel. Commons River Conservation and Management Plan was adopted by the town board in 2013. Goals of the plan include, but are not limited to, the following. Any new development or redevelopment in the Commons River watershed should not adversely impact water quality in the Commons River or the key ecological communities in the Commons River watershed. The plan reveals the quality of groundwater determines the quality of water in the Commons River, and the plan mapped groundwater contributing areas and made it part of the management plan. Staff finds that the parcel is within the zero to two-year groundwater contributing area, or the amount of time groundwater travels to surface waters. And as such, the closer to the river associated nitrogen-related impacts increase. And the plan makes certain recommendations, one of which involves zoning actions and include the following, that the town Brookhaven Board of Appeals, to the extent permitted by town law, section 267B, should evaluate all requests for variances relating to their consistency with the goals and recommendation of the plan. And the Commons River plan also cites past plans to enhance and protect surface and groundwater sources, including the 1978 Long Island Regional Planning Board, Long Island Comprehensive Waste Treatment Management Plan, or the 208 study. And one such recommendation of this plan is to minimize population density by encouraging large lot development, one dwelling unit per acre where possible, to protect the groundwater from future pollutant loadings. In terms of dwelling size, the building envelope intends to provide a two-story dwelling. While it is not clear according to the survey what the second floor area may be, the first floor is intended at 1,125 square feet. It is noted that the recommending dwelling size for 50 foot wide lots is 1,500 square feet, the 1,000 square feet on the first floor and 500 square feet on the second. It is the opinion of staff that the magnitude of relaxation individually and collectively to be substantial, or for variances requested require relaxations of 50% or greater, with both the area and frontage relaxations being 70 with both the area and frontage relaxations being seventy-three percent and seventy-two percent deficient of code requirements. In addition, the application conformance conforms with twelve percent of similar-sized lots in the entire five-hundred-foot radius. It is noted that lots eleven, eighteen, four, fourteen, thirteen, thirty-nine, and thirty-eight are vacant and similar in size and configuration as the proposed endeavor, which may establish a precedent for similar endeavors after the implementation of the two thousand thirteen Commons River Plan. As the board is aware, it is required to take into consideration the benefit to the applicant weighted against the detriment in the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood and community. As previously noted, an additional substandard lot in the zero-to-two-year groundwater contributing area of the Commons River is expected to impact the environmental conditions in the locale in terms of increased nitrogen contributions to the watershed. In the matter of Triple Crown Estates versus the Board of Appeals, the Supreme Supreme Court found that the BZA was clearly within its discretion to refuse to grant variances for the development of undersized parcels, which will exacerbate the burden placed on the groundwater and surface water quality. Collin Drive is not improved at the subject parcel, and the survey does not indicate how access to lot is intended. It's previously noted there are multiple privately-owned lots on the south side of Collin Drive. And as such, should the board look favorably on the cap application, same should be subject to a town of Brookhaven Department of Highway Work Permit and/or improved road improvement plan with the Division of Planning. As per the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the application is a type-two action. And should the board decide to grant the application, staff recommends the standard residential mitigation as well as a seventy percent clearing limit.
Alright then, for the record, those are the comments of the board's planner. Mr. Allen, that certainly was a significant amount of information. How did you want to present this?
Okay, um, recommendations of the planner, we tend to agree with what he said. We are not objecting to any of those recommendations. We are going to change the size of the house. We really didn't realize it when we put it on the survey. We just did the side yard measurements. We're looking for one thousand on the first floor and five hundred on the second floor. And that would agree with what Chris had mentioned. Uh, the second thing is in keeping with the environmental aspects of this property. Uh, we are proposing an IA system with, um, Fuji sanitary system model zero ENS with EL EN GSF reaching system to be self-contained on the property, which, as the board is probably more aware than I am, and Chris also, that, um, that reduces the nitrogen level and loading more than a considerable amount. I'm not gonna say the number, but I'm sure Chris would know that. Uh, there's one other thing about the road. We would bring the road up from Kingston and we would apply and be subject to any of the recommendations of the planning board. So we would like to develop it, small house and non-nitrogen or low nitrogen system. Approved already, not approved, but an approved plan that the Suffolk County Health Department is approving uh, for other units. There's any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lazarus.
Mr. Allen, um, you're proposing to revise this, Mr. Chairman. Do we have to go back and start this as a revised, um, presentation?
No, I, I think what, what I'm hearing, Mr. Lazarus, was that the applicant has proposed to alter the size of the house, therefore the setbacks uh, would change. And if the board was moving in that direction, we would, of course, ask for a revised survey. I think the focus, um, it now is, uh, on the, uh, on the, on the variances being sought. Uh, most importantly, the lot area and lot frontage variances based upon the comments we have from the board's planner. So I don't know that I need to hold her for a revised survey. I think the, uh, the thrust of the inquiry here is whether or not the variances for the frontage in the area, um, to be granted by the board based upon the testimony of the planner. So you can inquire in that regard. If we were going to move forward favorably, we could certainly ask for a revised survey and, and you could see specifically what the setbacks would be.
I see. So what, if we're changing, Mr. Allen, you're proposing to change the size of the house to conform with the one thousand square foot first floor and five hundred square foot second floor. What dimensions would, uh, would be affected, both the side yard and the front yard uh, in that respect? Because, well, let's see, uh, the front yard would be in the, um, in the, uh, right-of-way, which is not a street, because you have the, uh, the layout of, I would imagine, what would have been a standard, uh, disposal, sewage disposal system would, which would now be an IA, it still would remain in the front yard, right?
Absolutely. So we would move, we would reduce the house probably in the length of the house, not the, we would rather not do the width, but the length of the house from north to south, I guess it would be, um, so that it would fit the one thousand square feet. And then the upstairs would be five hundred square feet.
Okay.
As it was planned originally, when this house was, uh, when we thought about it, it was gonna be one-story with a small one-bedroom upstairs. So it's basically what we had in mind anyway, but we could make the first floor footprint smaller. And then the one-room upstairs would be basically the same as what we had intended.
So the footprint you're suggesting would just be the length of the house, which is front to back in the lot.
Well, we, the board, yeah, if the board really wanted it, so we could make it narrower. That's, that's up to the board.
Well, I see that. Okay, well, I'm trying to get through this. And then let me just reiterate what you said, that somehow or another, you are going to make a proposal to, um, to bring the road around or to improve Collins. Is that?
It would come, yeah, the road would, uh, can, they would continue from Kingsland Avenue and then come around to the front of Collins.
Right, and then add, uh, it would end at the eastern property line?
It would end at the property line. We put a driveway in.
Yeah, okay. Uh, and how do you propose that that be done? The owner is certainly not gonna pay for that, uh, or, or is you gonna, are you going to appeal to the highway department to build that and then pay for it or whatever?
Uh, probably the whatever part.
Yeah, okay. Well, tell me what the whatever is.
Well, we could do it. If the highway department refuses, then we would, um, build it ourselves.
Okay, um, Mr. Chairman, I really don't have any more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Mr. Allen, uh, I'm just reviewing the testimony of the board's planner. Uh, your client acquired the parcel in what, two thousand seventeen?
Yes, sir.
And the zoning at the time of the purchase was what?
I guess it was A1 at that time.
It was A1. And in looking at the survey and, and just, uh, the radius, I see that there's, uh, forty-six Kingsland Avenue. Your client lives there?
Yes.
Alright, and this is why we see it's D Pro, because it's Danielle Proceda.
Right, she would be here, but she's in a hospital having a baby.
Well, um, congratulations to her. But, uh, so, so she's lived there and she acquired this parcel and, uh, among all of the parcels there, because there is what, how many, how many, uh, undeveloped fifty-foot wide lots are there in a row? Was there eight? Am I seeing that, eight or nine or seven? Did, did she try to acquire any, any more of them?
Yes, she did. Uh, there are two about where the, um, in the center there. They belong to a real estate company and they're not interested in selling them.
How about the one, how about the one adjacent to the vacant one that you're bringing us today?
Uh, that belongs to, I'm pretty, I'm not sure, but it doesn't belong to her or any family member. About half of those lots belong to the cement plant that you.
And that, that's the industrial use that's across the street?
Yep.
Alright.
Industrial use is spilling out onto, uh, Collin Drive as it is now. They just use it as if it's their own property. So, um, he is just, I don't know what he's waiting for, but, uh, he didn't, he decided not to buy that. She bought it because she lives there. She doesn't want anybody else there. She doesn't want the industrial, uh, portion of the cement factory to spill over into where she lives. So she bought it.
I mean, her, her lot runs across six of eight of the, of the, of the, of the lot. So, um, she's gonna have something there one day. The question is, what, what is it? She's proposing to us that these lots should be developed individually.
Well, I don't, uh, you know, my personal opinion is if everybody's gonna do what's necessary, if they're gonna build a small house that, uh, fits into what the zoning recommendations are.
Well, no, it wouldn't fit into the zoning recommendations because you're to the board. But my question to you was directly, she's proposing to us, I guess, that each of these lots, these little fifty-foot wide lots, should be developed on their own along this road, along this roadway.
Well, this is the only one she has, so I don't.
Yes, but you, you see, though, that once this board acts.
She's not suggesting at all what the other people should do with their property.
But would you, but you, you recognize the fact that the board's action favorably on this one lot would create the precedent for every other lot on that roadway on Collin Drive?
Some of these lots are already married, so it's not gonna make any difference with those. And there are a couple owned by a real estate company that are much further down what would be Collin Drive. So I don't know how feasible it would be in order to pave that whole road.
For eight, for eight or nine houses?
Well, you're gonna have to get everybody in agreement to what to do, and that's a little bit difficult these days.
Well, Mr. Reed, in the course of his presentation, provided this board with certain opinion. Uh, as I recall, he, he advised us that the application does not conform with the surrounding development pattern and would create precedent for similar proposals. Are you, do you disagree with that opinion? Are you prepared to give us expert opinion on behalf of the applicant?
I disagree with that because of the fact that, uh, there already are houses on fifty-foot lots, of which number forty-six is that she actually owns.
And when, when, and when, or when the board's planner, uh, took the application, measured against the, the town code, there was little, um, if, if any conformity. Uh, but more, more, but more importantly, let me finish. Uh, when he compared it to what was on the ground, and this is what your point is, that there's others like it, when he compared to what is on the ground here, in terms of lot frontage and lot area, um, he calculated it to be twelve percent conformity. Did you calculate differently?
Um, no, I didn't. I didn't calculate it at all, but I, Mr. Reed is usually putting right on.
Alright, in terms of, uh, the, what's occurred since there has been some development there in terms of the, the town board's adoption of the Commons River Conservation Management Plan and the incorporation of, of the, of the parcel question into the Pine Barrens, uh, did you have any comment on those issues for us?
Yes, my comment is, is that we're gonna put in the proper waste treatment facility that's going to take care of those concerns. You know, we're not just saying we're gonna put a house in and then put in, uh, a regular septic system. I know it shows that on the, uh, survey, but, uh, we're right, we're in total agreement with an IA system. And I even gave you the specifications and the numbers of that system. And it's, those systems have been approved by the Suffolk County Health Department, waste water management.
Alright, Mr. Allen, is, is there anything further from the board on the application? Um, Mr. Vega, do we have any speakers on the application?
Mr. Chair, yes, I have two speakers.
Alright, can we promote them both then, please?
I have Danielle and a Diane.
Alright. Uh, Danielle and Diana, I can, I see that you're both being promoted, although you both still have video and audio off. Diana, you've just, you just did your video, your, your audio on and off, but, uh, I, we don't see either of you and nor can we hear you because you both, you have yourself muted. Alright, then Danielle, you have unmuted yourself. Are you able to put your video on? Uh, Diana, you've unmuted yourself. Are, are either of you able to put your video on?
I will in a second.
Alright, thank you.
Am I good?
The answer to that question is always yes, but I'm looking to see where you are. Uh, I, I have no, uh, no video for either of you.
I can see you. Oh, can you see me now?
Are you Diana or Danielle?
I'm Diana.
Hi, Diana. I see, well, you have a box with your name on it, uh, but it, it, it's a dark box and I don't have video.
Oh, I don't know how to do that.
Alright, um, Mr. Allen, I, uh, if you, if, if you don't find it objectionable, I'm willing to take a name and address and swear these individuals in and take their testimony. Uh, if you have an objection because you can't see them.
I have no objection.
Alright, thank you, sir. So we can move this along.
You sound like real people, so.
They, they do sound like real people. So Diana or Danielle, who'd like to speak first?
I'll speak first, Diana.
You are Diana. Alright, Diana, here's what we're going to do. I'm gonna ask you to please give your attention to the board's attorney. He's gonna swear you in.
Always worth telling the truth, the whole truth, the whole truth.
I do.
Alright then, Diana, please, um, state your name and spell your last name for us, please.
My name is Diana Gutierrez, G U T I E R R E Z.
And your address?
Or Collin Drive in Shirley.
Are you, so you are the corner lot?
I am.
And then you must know, um, the owner of this parcel, which is Ms. Proceda.
I don't know her. I have met her once or twice.
Alright, so you've come on, you are familiar with this neighborhood, because this is where you live. What would you like to tell us about, um, the application before us?
Well, I have several issues with this. Um, the first one being that I'm on, I'm on the corner lot. I've been here for twenty-four years. This road has been closed since I moved here, before I moved here. There is a fence that's on my original survey that's kind of blocking the road. And we have used that little area. Um, we have put bluestone, we have maintained that area for all these years because the town didn't bother with it, because I don't, I think they knew that it was part of their road. Um, and so in order for them to build that road coming to Kingsland Avenue, that means that they would be coming with pass through my fence, through, it's not, well, it is my fence, through the fence and on to the road and make me a corner property. So I definitely did not buy my house thinking I was gonna be a corner property. Besides that, anybody in the town, um, that's familiar with my property knows that the years I had water issues. They were coming from Nicola ready mix, um, from the railroad, from the town paper road, depending on who you spoke to. But my house was actually getting flooded. And for years and years, I fought to have something done. And finally, the highway department came in and they put berms up and they prevented my house from getting flooded. So I am actually a nervous wreck about anything being disturbed over there because I had too many sleepless nights prior to them fixing it. Um, the other thing is that I had gotten a knock on the door from my neighbors. Um, how long ago? A while back, and they were looking to, they notified me that they bought the property behind me. And they wanted to put in a driveway for their workers to park and then be able to come around and exit. And of course, I was opposed to that. I said, well, I'm not taking down the fence. It's always been our, um, we were, we were told years ago that we were, we were told years ago that in order for them to pave that road that they would have to pave it from the Lucerne end, from the east end of the road because the fire department needed the quickest accent to the building that they were going to. I don't know if that's true. That's what we were always told. So I'd like to know if that is actually the case or if that's just someone that told us something that's untrue. My last thing is, I don't know why anybody would want to build a house facing Nicola Cement Plant. My house has no windows on that side, but we get so much sand that blows this way that if they open their door, they're going to have sand in their house. It kind of just seems kind of weird that they would want that to be their front yard. But that's up to them. Um, I think I have said everything I wanted to say and I thank you for your time.
Well, we appreciate you coming out. Let me ask a board member, are there any questions or comments from Ms. Gutierrez? All right, thank you for coming up and we will take your comments into consideration when deciding the application.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Do we have, uh, it was another individual that was promoted. Mr. Vega, did they, uh, did they disappear?
They did. I think her name was Danielle.
Yes.
Promoted her back.
Hi, how are you?
Danielle, okay, very good. Danielle, so we have no, oh, we do have audio, we have a video now. Very good. Thank you for waiting to be heard on this application. Again, let me ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney, Mr. Doyle, and he will swear you in. Mr. Doyle, I didn't even hear that. Are you muted or?
I do.
All right, then Danielle, could you give us your full name and spell your last name for us?
Danielle Proceda, P R O C I D A.
And your address?
Forty-six Kingsland Avenue, Shirley, New York.
Thank you. So you are the applicant. Mr. Allen is here representing you and you, uh, you are the, what the principal of D Pro.
Yes. Correct.
Well, congratulations on your, on your impending baby or baby. But I'm, I'm happy that you're well enough to, to speak to us today regarding this application. What did you wish to add to the conversation?
Um, the one major thing I wanted to add was when this parcel was purchased in 2017 and I looked at it before purchasing it, you will see that, um, yes, my neighbors have taken over a piece of Colin drive as their own and made it some sort of a driveway that works for them. But if you look beyond there, that road actually is, um, it's public property and that's where Nicola has been moving their product over the wall, moving into, um, that private road. Um, so yes, if this application is granted, I would want to open up for Colin Drive and Kingsland and put in a private driveway. Um, I had no intention of parking any sort of, um, vehicles there. I'm not sure where that information came from. Maybe, um, that was a breakdown in communication, um, but I would use that, that entrance to create a driveway then into the property to park the vehicles, um, for that property.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments from board members? Not sure who said that, but Mr. Allen, did you wish to give us any final comments?
Only final comment is that if there was a flooding problem, I'm sure that when the highway department gave us the design or approved the design, that that would also help. Uh, the sand issue that she has, if Nicola concrete is not going to be there forever, but it would actually make them move their product from the roadway. The, uh, from Colin Drive and off of my client's property back into their own property on the other side of the wall. And it would probably help the sandstorm that does eventually come there once in a while.
All right, is there anything further from the board? This is whatever motion.
Close and hold.
Motion is by Mr. Lazar to close and hold on the application. Mr. Lindsay, seconded all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you're muted. Oh, sorry. While we're out, while we are resolving that issue, this is cases eight nine, the name of Thomas for debt. Care of building permits plus 19 Stillwood Road, Brookhaven, New York, location, East Side Cove Avenue. Three hundred and twenty feet south of Montauk Highway, East Mariches, applicant request lot area left frontage from your setback and minimum and total side yard variances for proposed one family dwelling. I will can further request side yard variance for proposed wraparound ramp to second story deck. Mr. Allen, I'm sure that you're still with us. I see that you're here. You've previously been sworn. Let's start with your appearance for the record, please.
Jason Allen, building permits plus, okay, the New York for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I mean, we have a fully analyzed application with a report from the board's planner with a planner ready to speak. But I need to ask you, um, I it appears as though this, um, application is made up of multiple pieces of land that the applicant has no interest in. One of which is a public roadway.
Um, that, uh, that remains to be seen. It has ordered all the titles, the, uh, it is not a public roadway. Um, he owns it. He bought it from the original owner who did the land division. Um, it's, he has clear title to it.
All right, well, that, that's, that's nice for you to say, but.
There is one other issue. Some property that he has rights, beach rights and the right to use that he included uh, and gave it to the surveyor and the surveyor marked it all up. So actually, um, if we're going to um, instead of wasting the board's time, this particular time, um, I can get all of the information on the roadway and I can get the information on the.
Sharon, you can, you can use a commonly owned parcel in conjunction with a request to build a home. It's, uh, parcels need to be owned, um, by the applicant and you're going to establish, you're going to have to establish to us proof of ownership. It's not what he has right to cross over that's going to be included in a, in a, a request to, to, uh, to develop a parcel. So I don't know how much time you need on this. I'm well tempted at this point to just hold you over indefinitely because I don't know based upon what you're saying that you're ever going to show us ownership, but I will do what you request.
Okay, well, we have, uh, we have some deeds, um, and we have some titles from fidelity. Uh, there is that one large piece across the bay that he has rights to.
Yeah, but, but you, you recognize in 2014, this board acted, uh, to, to grand variances to develop uh, the plot, I guess, behind this. I guess it was in the name of Capiello and half of the, the more than half of the land that you're proposing for the development, this development was included in that application in support of the development of that lot. So you can't use them here. I don't, I don't know what. You're going to remove those?
Yes.
So this is a whole new application.
When I add the Cove, Cove, Cove Lane belongs to Mr. For Dead. That is not a road. He owns that.
And how we, how, how do you plan, how do you plan to establish that through an abandonment?
Uh, no, it was never, it was never listed as a road.
So he has, he has deed, he has deed entitled to that area. Well.
Suffolk County maps and it's also, um, been reviewed by, uh, I guess Dave in the town of Brookhaven and mapping and we will get you the necessary information.
All right. So how long would you like on this application?
Uh, you can do an indefinite and we can bring it back on. If the county wasn't closed, I would only take a 30 day, but since the county is closed, uh, or, you know, theoretically closed, it's going to take us a little bit longer to do that.
All right. I, I think that that is probably the best way to go because it's going to look completely different. You're going to have all new surveys.
Yes.
All right.
Absolutely.
Mr. Vega, did, do, did we have anyone waiting to be heard on the application?
Mr. Chair, I have no, um, I have no speakers on yet.
All right, then, uh, I'm going to ask then for the board for motion to hold this matter open indefinitely.
Don't move.
Motion in second have been made all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Ms. Ricardi has comments for us. So I asked any opposed, um, I said all in favor. I'm sorry, let's do that again, please. All in favor. Opposed motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. All right, so we, we have further issues. So with, so we can, we're going to move on to case. Just bear with me a second. So case 10 is in the name of Melody Siambra. Uh, five two two Hagerman Avenue, East Patchogue, west side of Hagerman Avenue is location 200 feet north of Atlantic Avenue, East Patchogue. Applicant request front yard setback variance for existing eight point two by 16.1 roof over deck with steps. Also rear yard variance for proposed one story residence addition.
Mr. Chair, I have Dennis Oliver for the applicant and I also have the applicant Melody Siambra.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Sir, we can see you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. I can see you. How are you today?
Very good. I'm going to ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
I do.
Thank you, sir. And let's start with your appearance for the record, please.
Dennis Oliver, nine twenty-four Newbridge Road, Belmore, New York. I'm the architect for Melody Siambra, five twenty-two Hagerman Avenue in East Patchogue.
Thank you, sir. And your, um, your client is here also. I don't know whether that is just to observe, but I think she's also been promoted. So Melody, uh, when you, if and when you wish to speak, you can just unmute yourself and choose your video and we will invite you to, to speak at that point. But, uh, sir, having given us your appearance, what would you like to tell us about the application?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, we are seeking permission to maintain a front roofed over porch and construct a new rear one story rear addition. Uh, the property is located in an A1 residential zone. It is a substandard sized plot, not conforming lot. Anything we do to this house, even if we were to build a second floor on it, we would require variances for front yard, front yard and rear yard. As I said, it's, it's an conforming lot. We're required 4,000 square feet. The lot has 10,000 square feet. The original house was constructed in 1997 with the variance. Our minimum front yard required under the zoning is, is 50. We are proposing 25.54 to the first step and 27.7 to the deck with the roof over in the front yard. The rear addition, we're requiring 60 feet for a rear yard. We're proposing 22.89 feet. There are similar houses in the area with porches. Some of those are 507 and 509 Walker Avenue. Two twenty Atlantic Avenue, five thirty-two and five thirty-four Columbus Avenue and four sixty-six Donegan Avenue. Uh, if it's just be, it should be noted that I've picked those lots because the property sizes are fairly similar to what we have here. As far as the rear yard goes, uh, I have several houses again. Four three eight and four three six Donegan Avenue, four one five Columbus Avenue, six twenty-seven Americas Avenue, five oh nine Columbus Avenue. As far as any kind of other option, um, we, we thought about doing a garage conversion. That would have been a problem because if we had converted the garage, now we have to build a two car garage and that's, that's a whole nother bag of worms. This actually seemed like to be the, the easiest way to, uh, obtain the extra space that my client needs. Uh, we did, she did speak to the surrounding property owners. I did email in a consent letter. We've gotten, uh, five of the surrounding property owners stating that, signing that letter stating that they have no objection to this, uh, case being approved. Should the board look favorably on the application, my client would agree to that front porch, uh, remaining open and not being converted to living space. If the board has any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ver.
So sir, uh, Mr. Oliver, you say that the, um, the rear yard of, uh, that you're proposing of about 23 feet is consistent with other properties in the area?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what's the purpose of the room that you, your client wants to build back there?
That's a larger family room. Uh, they have a good sized family. The, the existing living room is not big enough to accommodate everybody. If they can make this family room on the back of the house, they could tie it in with the kitchen and make basically what would become a great room.
Okay. And the front porch I see from the survey, uh, you, you're going to be holding a 25 and a half foot. Uh, setback to this, from the property line to this, to the steps, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
And twenty seven, almost 28 feet to the deck itself. And the, uh, the property line is significantly set back from the, uh, from Hagerman, is that right?
That is right, yes.
Right. And you say there are other porches, uh, in the area that, and it seems to be of a modest size. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Burksen. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Chairman, I move to approve the application submitted type two.
Second.
Motion in second have been made all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good day.
You too. Bear with me, bear with me a second.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to drop out for a minute. I'll be right back.
Thank you. All right, then case number 11, in the name of Diana D'Amato Prudenti. Ten Bay Street, East Mariches, New York, location, South Side Bay Street. Three hundred and seventeen point five feet east of Evergreen Avenue, East Mariches, applicant requests total side yard variance for existing one story residence addition. Including attached garage, side yard variances for existing shed, storage bin and generator all located in the required side yard. Also rear and side yard variances for existing wood deck.
Mr. Chair, I have a Diane Moji for the applicant.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recuse on the application.
Thank you. The record should reflect that Mr. Kunya is recused. And Ms. Moji, we can see you. Were you able to hear us?
Yes.
Great. Good to see you. Let me ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Sure. Yes, I do.
Thank you. We could start with your appearance then.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Diane Moji, DNI, Expediting Services Offices located at seven seven nine Horse Block Road in Farmingville. The subject premises, uh, that is before you, um, is an existing single family dwelling. Um, this is not my survey.
Yes, I was just, I'm going to ask Mr. Vega to.
You confused me. I'm like, oh, wait a minute. My, uh, okay, thank you. Um, okay, so the, uh, the subject premises is located on Bay Street. Uh, there's a single family dwelling, uh, that has, um, existed on the subject premises. Um, it has been improved, um, over the years. Uh, there have been additions and, and whatnot added. Um, we're before the board today, basically because the generator in the side yard, the shed located in the side yard and, um, I believe the, uh, the deck in the rear yard. So, uh, I did submit photographs and I did submit my mailings, um, although, uh, the town being closed yesterday and I ran a little late on Monday, so, uh, they were left this morning. I don't know if you have those.
We do have them in the file.
Okay, so, um, you can see here, um, there's a storage bin that's, uh, on the survey that's pointed out. It's a small little like bin for wood, okay? And, um, the house is kept in immaculate condition. These structures do not create any detriment to the surrounding areas. You can see by the photograph that there's a rather large arbivides that protect the property line, so the shed is barely visible. Okay, and you can see that the generator there is up on a platform because it is on the water and it needs to be kept elevated. Because the elevation zone. And basically, the existence of these structures would not create any detriment to the surrounding area nor would it impair the values thereof. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Ms. Moje, questions from the board?
Chair.
Mr. Wisdom.
Diane, so looking at the aerial, I see that there are some large homes in the area. This is right down near the bay, correct?
Correct, it's on Mauritius Bay, they have a dock, there is a bulkhead.
I see that, I can see that. On there, so there's a shed that's on the east side of the property, correct?
Correct.
And then you have, what else is that, there's a second shed alongside the house, almost right next to it?
There's a shed that's closer to the platform where the generator is. And then there's like this storage bin that I pointed out in one of the first photographs, that's like not very, maybe it's three feet tall and it's kind of like a, almost like a. Deck box, but it's made out of wood.
So that's where the generator sits right there?
Right, a little further north next to the shed.
Yes. Okay, so. And you're here for the second story deck and the shower?
Right, the second story deck and the shower, the shower is on the other side of the house. The shower, we wanted to make sure that we added everything, you can see that it's barely even visible, it's right here.
Storage bin, the generator, the garage.
Stuff listed on the permit doesn't necessarily need the variance. We needed the total side yard variance for the existing one-story residence addition, including the attached garage. The side yard variance for the existing shed, the storage bin and the generator. And side yard variance for the existing wood deck.
And I can see that from the aerial on Google Maps. So this is not out of character with the neighborhood at all, am I right?
Absolutely not, and you can see by the photographs that I, that have shown that the house is absolutely meticulous.
Yeah, it's at the end of the cul-de-sac. Okay, I have nothing problem.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom, is there anything further from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Yeah, I have one question, Diane, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, so the wood walkway that goes across the back along the water there, it looks like it. It ends on like, looks like a platform there, I guess, right, is that what that's in the corner?
Right.
I would just only, I would just only make a comment that it looks like the platform extends out past the property line, I don't really have a question about it, but it's just maybe a comment.
No, that is correct, I think that, as you know, the board will act with a zero lot line. So that portion of that, that's not within the property line, doesn't pertain to the variance, we just go to the property line.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mazzarella, is there anything further from the board? Mr. Vega, do we have a speaker on this application?
Mr. Chair, I do not have a speaker on this.
All right then, I'll note for the record that. The application is subject to chapter 81 of the code, and I'll ask the board if there's a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant the application subject to chapter 81. Grant the application.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Wisdom, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, again with a zero lot line on the wood deck variance, all in favor? And the opposed? And motion carries. And Mr. Vega, the answer to that question was yes.
Case number 12, Alan Roscoe, 28 Orbitalis Lane, Quorum, New York, west side of Orbitalis Lane, 683.19 feet north of Community Road Quorum. Applicant requests rear yard variance for proposed sunroom.
Mr. Vega, do we have an applicant here?
Yes, we have a. John Tufo. I also have Mr. Roscoe, the applicant.
Thank you. So Mr. Tufo, I do see you being promoted, and we can see you now, and you just take your, there you go, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Very good, sir, and apparently your client is here with us also, I don't know if it's just to, just to observe. But we will start with you, if that's okay, I'll ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney.
You saw this where I tell the truth.
Yes, I do.
And your appearance to the record, please.
John Tufo, that's T like Tom, E U F like Frank, E L, professional engineer. 707 Route 110, Farmingdale, New York. I'm here today representing Alan and Georgette Roscoe. Who are requesting a rear yard setback variance to construct a 356 square foot unheated prefabricated sunroom. On an existing rear first-story deck. At their home at 28 Orbitalis Lane in Quorum. The deck has a certificate of compliance number CC 272 989. The zone is A1, where a 60-foot rear yard setback is required. And we're proposing 57.9 feet to the proposed sunroom. Again, to be built on the existing first-story deck, the deck is about 1 foot 9 inches above the grade. As mentioned previously, this deck has a certificate of compliance issued by the town of Brookhaven and the sunroom will be built directly over the deck. Mr. and Mrs. Roscoe have owned the house.
Six hours.
It's all your back. Lori, you're back.
Not yet.
No, I hear you. Mr. Tufo, excuse us, we are having some difficulty today, but that was a good sign, but go ahead, continue.
Thank you, thanks. Mrs. and Mrs. Roscoe have owned the house for 12 years, really love the area. They'd like to build the sunroom to enjoy the outdoors when there may be inclement weather. And to add a little space to their one-story ranch home. We are aware of at least one other similar sunroom in the area. There have been no complaints from their neighbors about the proposed sunroom. Finally, Mr. and Mrs. Roscoe are elderly and spend most of their time at their residence. So this sunroom would be extremely beneficial to them. Thank you for hearing our case, this completes our presentation.
Thank you, thank you for that presentation, the board sees that you are here for a 2 foot 3 inch rear yard setback for this. Proposed sunroom and are familiar with the area through the information that we have, so I don't have any questions for you directly, sir. Is there anything further from the board on the application? If not, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry, Mr. Vega.
I can't be 100% certain, but I believe I have a speaker on the case. I don't know if that's their username is Capone 12, or if they were here for case 12.
Why don't we promote them just to be sure?
I can't hear them.
We hear you now. All right, I do see the individual being promoted, I don't have video or audio. Mr. and Ms. Capone, if you are able to. Just start your video and unmute yourself, we can ascertain what case you're here to speak on, if you're here to speak at all, if you're not. You can indicate to us by using the chat function. That you don't wish to speak, but I would like to give you the opportunity to speak if you aren't back here waiting. To do so. All right, based upon the minor nature of the variance. It's hard for me to believe that we would have anyone wishing. To speak on the application. So. I'm going to ask the board for that motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to grant the application as presented.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha. Seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
That was.
Mr. Chair, is Ms. Ricardi's already back?
I hope so.
Ms. Ricardi is back.
Okay. Case number 13, Jeremy and Christina Brownie, care of Michelle Quattrali, 100 Colonial Drive, East Patchogue. Property is located on the northeast corner Oak Lane and Oak Drive, Blue Point. Applicant requests rear yard variance for existing deck, height variance for existing seven-foot high fence.
Mr. Chair, I have Michelle Quattrali for the applicant.
Thank you. Ms. Quattrali, we can see you, are you able to hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Very good, welcome, let's, have you sworn?
Thank you.
Very good, we'll start with your appearance, please.
Michelle Quattrali, 100 Colonial Drive, East Patchogue, New York.
Thank you, Ms. Quattrali, you are here for wood deck and a fence at seven feet high, what would you like to tell us?
This property has been before this board back on July 12, 2017, it was case number 29. For the rear deck, the pool equipment and eight-foot fence around the pool. The deck and the pool equipment were granted, but the eight-foot fence was denied by the board. Mr. Brownie unfortunately did not complete the permit process within the two-year period. Which brings us back in front of you today, and this application before you is for the same deck. That you approved in 2017, nothing's changed there. The only change is that Mr. Brownie did reduce the pool enclosure. The fencing to six feet as required by code, except for a small portion. That is 21-foot section near the driveway where the entry gate exists. And this area was reduced to a seven-foot high fence. I submitted for the record and for the board's review of the photos of the subject property, so you can see how this fence and patio basically exists on the property. This rear yard is surrounded by 14-foot high Leland Cypress. And has about a two-foot elevated patio that surrounds the pool. The entrance to the pool area or the backyard is from the gate that's located on that north side of the driveway. The gate is 74 feet from the pavement to Oak Street, oh, excuse me, Oak Lane. Making the one-foot height relief we're requesting here, barely noticeable by anybody passing by. In the photos, you can see that once the gate is open, you must go up two steps to get to the pool patio level. When you're on the patio level, the fence is really around five feet high. This is a 21-foot, 21 linear foot of fence where one foot shorter than. Says if this 21-foot linear fence were shorter by the one foot, it would actually only be a four-foot high fence when you're standing on the patio. Giving a little, not enough privacy when you're walking around in a bathing suit from the road with the neighbors. The board has granted fences over six feet from grade in the past. As well as granting fences on top of walls and/or patios that make them over the six-foot tall. There is a property three houses to the west. And across Oak Lane that has a six-foot fence on top of a two-foot wall. As well as across the street, the house has a six-foot fence with approximately a two-foot pipe. And wire above it making about eight feet from grade. I'm not sure if the board granted these variances, but it does show that there is conformity to the area. So if the board has any questions, I'd like to entertain.
Thank you, for the board members that haven't seen them, Ms. Quattrali didn't, in fact. Describe the photographs rather well that she sent us specifically the uses of the same height. In the neighborhood, I can hold them up the best I can, if anyone wants it, but let me ask the board first, are there questions on the application?
Yes, Mr. Chair. How are you, Michelle, how's everything?
Very well, thanks.
Okay, so the one-foot, one-foot five-inch deck in the back between the two frame sheds, that's the deck that you're referring to that this board had approved in 2017, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And it's only one and a half feet high, correct?
Correct.
So it's approximately eight inches over what the town actually allows.
Oh, yes.
Okay, without a permit is what I. And the six-foot, the seven-foot stockade is only behind the driveway directly in line with the patio surrounding the pool, is that correct?
Right, it's two feet south of the patio because there's two footsteps going up to the patio. There's a little break in there, this is a, it's a specially made gate and fence. It's not your standard stockade, it's very beautiful, if you can see the pictures, very heavy duty. And. It's very pretty, I would hate to chop it down and then they lose their privacy.
Okay, the chairman just showed me the picture of the steps, I was just wondering if he had the actual fence.
There are pictures of the fence.
I do.
Okay.
That is from the driveway.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Michelle, no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, is there anything further from the board on the application? And again, just to be specific, Ms. Quattrali. The board is, as before, consideration of a seven-foot high, what you're calling wood fence, and it's. 23, approximately 23 or 23 and 11 inches. I'm sorry, doesn't go all the way to the setback, so what is it like?
It's about 21 linear feet, somewhere around there, 21 to 22 linear.
And that's the only section of seven-foot fence of the parcel.
Correct.
And from what I can see. In the board members, unfortunately, we did not, weren't able to get these photos up today, but. The grade in the rear yard is higher than it is in the front yard from. From where you step, that's why you're stepping two feet up from the driveway.
Correct.
All right, thank you, if there's nothing further, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to grant the application as presented type two.
Is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lazaro, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
You too.
Case number 14, Lisa Sanchez, 156 Howard Street, Port Jefferson Station. Located on the south side of Howard Street, 520 feet east of Broadway, Port Jefferson Station. Applicant requests rear yard variance for proposed one-story attached garage addition.
Mr. Chair, I have a pulse, I'll say for the applicant.
Thank you. Sir, I do see that you're being promoted, I don't have audio or video from you yet.
How about now, can you hear me now?
I can certainly, I can hear you, do you have the ability to put video on?
Let me do that. How about now, there we go.
Very good, that's usually the difference, that's usually the obstacle, but. We have you, we have you now, sir, thank you very much for attending, if I can ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Yes, sir. I do.
Very good, let's start with your name and address, please.
Sure, Paul Solce, Solce, S O L C E, at 207 Middle Country Road, Suite 3, Lake Grove, New York.
Thank you, Mr. Solce, and your relation to the application.
I'm the, I'm the agent for Lisa Sanchez. Who's residing at 156 Howard Street in Port Jefferson. We're requesting the relief for a rear yard setback for a proposed 22 and a half by 14 one-story garage addition, not to exceed 14 feet in height. Ms. Sanchez's intention is for additional storage space and a place to house her home gym equipment. The space will not be heated, so there is no intention for the addition to be used as habitable living space.
Thank you, sir, questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lindsay.
Good afternoon.
Yes, sir.
So she's going to, uh. It's not going to be heated?
No, not be heated, no, no heating, no plumbing in that area.
Okay, so and they're gonna be using it for a gym?
No, not a gym, she's for storage space and she's gonna part personal. What you call it, her personal home gym equipment, she's gonna put in there so she can use that to work out.
So, okay, but there's not going to be heat in there?
No, no heat, we've discussed that, I discussed that with her, she says she's not, she doesn't want heat in there.
Okay, so and what about the upstairs part, is it going to be storage upstairs? And what is the height on the garage?
Fourteen fourteen, I believe in it, I, you know, I believe it's fourteen feet on the garage, but it's not going to exceed the the which you call it. The height of the roof of the existing garage, so.
The roof of the existing garage. Okay, so it's just going out the back end.
Going out the back, yes.
Okay, so and how? How long have they been at the residence?
She's been at the residence since, I want to say ninety five, the house was built in nineteen seventy three.
Seventy three, okay, so. So you're adding, what is the total area of space you're adding to this house, sir?
Um, you know what, I didn't do the, hold on a sec, let me do that, I'm sorry, I apologize. So we're looking at twenty two and a half times fourteen, it's three hundred and fifteen square feet, it's twenty two and a half by fourteen.
Twenty two and a half by fourteen, so um, I am going to put a covenant on this for the garage.
Yeah, sure.
You know what I mean, so that way there won't be heating or no plumbing also, correct?
No plumbing.
Okay, no plumbing also.
That's not a problem.
Okay, and I just find it hard to believe that she's going to be working out in there in middle of January with no heat.
This is, I'm going, here's the thing, I'm going from what the client is telling me, so that's what I'm going with it. Plus, I know the the person that is going to probably do the work and. You know, we've we've discussed that about there too, because I know it's a totally different. Once you, once you start to to add plumbing and heating, then we're dealing with a totally different, you know, totally different beast.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm getting at, she's basically going to be using as a home gym area without heat. Which.
No, because you know, because basically.
Really just doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
No, because she said, she said to me, because we were talking about bathroom. And she goes, well, listen, I'm not, I'm not going to put it in there, I'll just go. If I need the bathroom while I'm working out, I'll walk into to the, you know, walk out and right into the main house and use and use the facilities. That's what she told me, so.
All right, well.
I mean, if if it need, if need be like a covenant and it's saying that she can't put. Plumbing or heating in there, you know what, then we'll go for that, because that's what, that's the intention is not to have that, so.
Okay, then I have no further questions, is there, is there other garages in the area that are that big, because you're adding?
You know, there is, there was one that was. At one seventy two Howard Street. You could see it from, I apologize for not getting it to you guys earlier, but I only just discovered it today. One seventy two, which is south and west of of one fifty six, if you look at it now. Compared to the aerial from two thousand and seven, it looks like they put an addition on on the garage. One seventy two, if you look at the aerial from two thousand and seven, which I pulled up, that is like half of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
And there was a major addition, if you if you want to know too, there was a major addition at one sixty three Howard Street. Where. The aerial, see, one sixty three, that back portion of the house. If you look at that, that was put on, I mean, two thousand and seven's aerial doesn't show that, so. I mean, that's the only, that's the only kind of which you qualify have as, you know.
Okay, there are no further questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay, is there anything further from the board, Mr. Burksen?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize if Mr. Lindsay asked us that, I might not have heard it. What's the? Connection, how is it going to connect between the old garage and the new garage?
It's going to be on, it's going to be on a slab, so it's just going to go off the 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 back wall of the of the.
So is it going to be, are you opening up that wall and is it going to be continuous, or is it just going to be a doorway, what's what's going to be, how?
What you call it, you know what, she was talking about putting a door. To the to the to the additional space, but.
But what?
Because if you look also, that AC unit has to be taken out too and moved, if you notice.
Right, right, no, I understand that, so.
I think what Mr. Burks is trying to say is we don't have a set of plans for the showing how they're getting in or out of there.
Right.
I'm not really sure it's a garage.
That, that's where I've been getting at, Mr. Burks, and thank you for pointing that out.
I mean, I can get the architect. To get plans, she's hired an architect, I just don't have, he doesn't have anything worked up as of now, so. But I can get that to the board.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Solsky, what you're hearing from my board members is that. They're showing, they're being proposed, what is a garage addition, but the total, the use of it is described as not, not a garage.
Right, I understand.
When we're dealing with more active space. And not passive garage space, and we bring it close to rear property lines, in this instance, eighteen feet, seven inches. It becomes a concern of the board because it's a significant departure from. What usually exists on the ground and certainly from the code requirement, so. You've you answered Mr. Lindsay's questions about being having willingness to put a covenant on it, but recognize that. Your client hopefully understands that it will be filed with the clerk, will run with the land forever. But the fact is that there's a tendency sometimes to. To separate that area and to use it for the for other uses that are contrary to what's being proposed to us, and yet it's going to be there forever, so. If you have a plan that you want to submit to us, I'd be happy to to let you submit it. What we have before us is a, what you're calling a garage addition, which is. Not in a configuration that we usually see, we see it's eighteen feet from a property line. If in fact, it's, if that's the use of it and it will remain a passive use with that covenant. And that's one thing, but if if you. I'm sensing from what you're telling us is that you're going on what your client said. Right, but I don't, I don't have any, I'm not hearing any certainty in your voices to. Whether or not that that's going to be the actual use. Use is not something that we generally deal with, we're dealing with setbacks, the setback is significant here, where you are at eighteen feet. And I think the board. Is looking for some assurances that we're actually going to be dealing with. Passive garage use and nothing more, I know, I haven't heard that from you yet.
No, but no, but I mean, that's what I hate, I don't know, but that's what the intention is to use is for like gym equipment and for storage space. Not, and I told her, that's what I conveyed to her, that, you know, you can't put in there, can't be used as living space, so and it's not going to be, so. You know, I mean. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make it clear. I mean, the variance is significant. But what I'm really objecting to right now is that it's just totally unclear what this. Structure is and what the application is.
If I can get, if I can get your plans, we can, we can show that how they're going to connect it. And how they're going to open that up. Then.
I I think that is necessary, if we could hold or whatnot until we see what's going on here.
No, normally, normally, when we see additions like this, it has to have direct access into the home. Rick will tell us because I. That because this is a garage addition, it doesn't have to have access. To the directly to the home, it only has to have access to the garage. I'd be happy to open for, to hold this open to receive from you, sir, what the. What the actual plan is for the board's review before acting on it, if you believe that you can. Put that together for us and make it part of the record by sending it to us.
You got it, not a problem.
Our only data have opened for you today is November eighteenth, if you need a further date, just advise us on the day, on that day in the morning.
You got it.
Are you going to send, you're going to send whatever you want to make part of the record to Ms. Ricardi of.
We'll send plans, so you see how how the how the addition is going to be connected to the existing structure.
Is there anything further from the board? Mr. Vegas, is there a speaker that we should promote?
Mr. Chair, I do not have a speaker this time.
All right, then is our motion to hold it until November eighteenth?
So move.
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay, second by Mr. Burks, and all in favor. And the opposed motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, board members, we we are going to take a break, I would say this is. This is four oh nine, can we agree on four thirty? It's four ten, twenty minute break, we'll resume it at four thirty, is there a motion for a brief recess? Motion and second have been made all in favor.
He's never gonna concede, Lauren.
Can you bring me on, Anthony?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Jimmy. I took you off because your everything was on when we all went to break.
There we go.
There you go.
What?
Hey, Lori, did Chris decide to leave?
Yeah.
Just remind me I have to, Lori.
Yeah.
Remind me one executive session I have something to tell you.
I will try to remember that. It's unlikely, though.
I'll try to remember.
Okay.
Hey, Paul. FYI. My video has been going in and out because my every time my internet has too much video going on, it starts slowing down and getting all messed up. Can't hear you. You're muted. You're muted. I didn't hear a thing you said.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I don't know where I am. Oh, Danny didn't hear. Alright, so but I don't have video. But your 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 audio was like that most of the night. So you would talk really fast and you would talk really slow. So it was doing with your voice also.
Okay, I was just trying. I was actually turning off the video, just trying to not use so much bandwidth. Oh, Paul disappeared. There you are.
Thanks. I'm actually, I have Jim trying to get me back.
You're here. What do you?
I don't know. I don't. I don't have the screen.
Hi, Jim.
Hey, Ron.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, it is 4:34. Do we have everyone? Or enough? I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Yeah, that's enough. Very good. Is there a motion to resume the hearing?
Case number 15, Christopher and Anna May Young, 42 Cherry Street, Calverton. Properties located on the east side of Cherry Street, 483 feet southeast of South River Road, Calverton. Applicant requests rear yard variance for proposed two-story attached garage addition with bathroom on first floor and unfinished unheated storage on second floor.
Mr. Chair, I have Christopher Young for the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Vega. Mr. Young, we can see you. Are you able to hear us, sir?
Yes, I can hear you. I just want to clarify. I am acting as an agent. The Christopher Young on the property is my father who has since passed. So it's my mom's and father's property. I'm acting as an agent for this project. So I can answer everything as as that.
All right, well, let's start by having you sworn. So if you can give your attention, please, to the board's attorney, please.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole about truth.
I do.
Very good, sir. And can we start with your name and address, please?
Okay, it's Christopher Young, 42 Cherry Street, Calverton, New York, 11933.
All right, sir. So this application as filed and proposed shows us shows the board a significant size addition to a garage. Tell us about the application and the need for the variances.
Sure. So this project is a garage extension. The use is for race cars and collector cars. My hobby is racing NASCAR, let it stuff at Riverhead and other racetracks across the Northeast. There's an existing garage that it's going to merge to, shown on the survey. When designed, we tried to satisfy all the 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 bounds with the zoning requirements as well as wetlands because there's water on the property. And the location that you're seeing was the final location for us. Unfortunately, I found out after applying for the building permit that the chain link fence shown is the backyard setback. So it requires an 80-foot distance and the proposed is 35. The garage itself is 30 by 54. It's heated and it had we planned a bathroom on the first floor. As I said, it would be for hobby racing purposes as the existing garage is too small.
Right, sir. And I had the opportunity to look at the denial that you received. The application is for a two-story garage, first first story 1,356 square feet with a bathroom, second floor 366 square feet unfinished, unheated, and no plumbing. Is that is that what is still being proposed? So when you mentioned the heated nature of the application, are you saying that you're proposing to have heat on the first floor?
Yeah, it will only be it would only be first floor. Yes. The second floor is just for park storage. It was a matter of working with the architect on the plans. And I asked, you know, what the difference would be to just put storage above where we're working. Unfortunately, in racing, you do a lot of wrecking. And that's that was planned for park storage and other things to clean the property up, keep everything contained. And, you know, kind of build an awesome shop.
All right. Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Azur.
Let me go back and see if I understand your statement. This is going to be the maintenance and or repair of your racing cars?
Well, the cars are going to be kept there. Yeah, the cars that currently they're in the regular garage. That is, will then be used for regular parking as it as it would have been.
Are these your cars?
The cars are, yes.
All of them?
Yes.
Right. They're not being you're not repairing them or maintaining them for someone else?
No, no.
No. And reiterate to me the second floor level. It is only part of the square foot of the footprint of the first floor, meaning that it's smaller in square foot area?
No, it's the same size. It's just a big box. We I think we we originally designed it to be one floor, and then we talked about storage and didn't want to consume, you know, floor space that would be for cars. Right now I have two. I'm planning to go to a different style of racing. So I'm going to grow in what I'm doing. Like I said, it's my my major hobby. And we wanted to add storage space. So instead of instead of consuming flat space, we just went taller.
Okay. Things like a car lift and everything would be associated in this building?
Yes, yes. It's got, the plans, which are, were not part of the submission for this, have two 16-foot doors facing the existing driveway for the workspace. It's a small staircase to get up upstairs over the bathroom in the layout. But yeah, I don't have a lift planned yet, only because we have different type of lifting for the car. So it's not, it's not required for the cars that we have now. But if I go to a different style car, I have plans in the concrete work to have pads installed for lifts.
Okay. So what you're saying is the hydraulic lifting mechanism is not from the floor slab down, it's above, the lifting devices are all above the slab?
Yeah, they would be, they would be bolted to the slab if I went with them. Like I said, I don't have a, I don't, I don't want one right now. So it's, it's not, not in the plan.
And I, I'm looking at the plan that's on the screen, the site plan that's on the screen. These are, this is a 30-foot deep garage?
Yeah, it's 30, right? Yes, it's 30 feet deep and 54 wide. Yeah, right there.
Yeah, I see it.
The existing garage that we work out of right now is 20, is 30 feet wide and 25 feet deep. So it's, it's, it's just a scaled up version of, of the existing.
Okay, so the existing garage you're also using in the same, in the same vein, same manner. Okay.
There are some previous examples in the area, although obviously they're not the same as this. There's one at 101 Forge Road, which is a two-story garage. I believe it's Riverhead Town, so might be out of the town, but it's very close, very similar to this, except it is detached. And then there's another closer example on, looks like, I have written down, 15 Pinehurst Boulevard. That's two separate garages that are on a property. It looks like, yeah, it would be 43 in this image. That had, they have two smaller garages close to the building that they also have cars in. And then there's a horse ranch with another structure that's detached, similar. It probably around the 104, I believe, lot there. Or, or I can't see it in here. So placement, it's nowhere near anybody's housing. It's hardly visible from the street just due to the length of the driveway. Like I said, the, the denial for the rear setback was really what put me over here. So.
Okay. So I was trying to understand from the site plan that I was given. Now I can see clearly, the property encompasses part of that lake or pond.
Yeah, it's all the way to the high watermark on the other side, but that water is jurisdiction of the wetlands. So the location that we put the shop was to get as far away from wetlands as, as possible.
Okay. So you will have plumbing in here?
Yeah, it's going to connect to the existing septic system. It's a relatively small burden on the existing system. It's a urinal and a toilet and a sink. So it's very, very small. It's a half bath, even though they listed it as a bathroom.
Okay. And the property to the north and the property to the east is open property, it looks like from the aerial view. And do they belong to private citizens or is that townships or what?
I believe they all belong to the county.
The county.
Yeah, the county of Suffolk.
Hmm, okay. So it's, it's a little bit clearer for me to, to say that. Hold on just a second. To say that, to reiterate what you said before, with regards to vision from the road or from the neighbors, this garage, you'd have to search to see if you could, to search to look for it because it's so well-hidden and especially on a, on the end of a, the other end of a driveway. You're going to have an intercommunicating stair as a normal stair rather than a pull-down stair as you would go to an attic.
Yeah, it, yeah, it would be a permanent install. I don't, not a pull-down.
Right. And there is going to be heating in this garage?
On the first floor, yes.
Not on the second floor?
No, not on the second floor.
I see.
I'm highly going to go with one of those like bolt-in propane units, the Modine's. They're like, that's standard for any, any type of, any type of garage stuff. It's, and it's intermittent heating. It's not going to be climate-controlled or anything.
Right. So it's going to be propane, the ceiling type with a fan blowing the air around?
Yeah, yeah. Uh huh. And that's, that's the same thing that I have in the existing. Right now, they're small units. It's, I'm not out there all the time, but you know, it's.
How, how tall will this building be?
I believe it, the plans, I'm going to have them right here. Let me double check. I believe it's 28 from grade. Yeah, it's 28 foot to the, the highest pony.
From the grade at that, at the point where the garage?
The grade that you would consider the floor level at the foundation, yes.
Okay. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Was there anything further from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
Okay, Mr. Young, a quick question. The second floor of that garage will not in any way connect to the second floor of the dwelling, will it?
No, the dwelling on that level is only one story. It, the, the structure of the garage will connect to the existing garage with a cricket, but it won't, there won't be any type of physical connection between the second story of that and the second story of the existing structure.
Okay. And my other question is about sound. I know, I know NASCAR modified cars are quite loud. Any issues with your neighbors?
No, I'm lucky that I'm very far away. I'm also very considerate with it. We don't run them unless we're at the track. Well, you know, except for very, very infrequent occasions.
Okay, so you're just going to work on them? If you have to run it, it's going to be for an infrequent period of time and?
Yeah. I honestly, I don't like to start them because it's the most abuse on a motor when you start it cold. So I'm, that's not, I've never had a complaint from my neighbors and I've, I've asked, I've been proactive about it because I'd rather, I'd rather if they're, if I'm bothering them, not do it, you know?
And that's, that's the reason why I asked. And obviously, I don't know if there's anybody out there that's going to speak on this, but I just wanted to get that out there. Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Young.
Of course, thank you.
I believe you had a win in August, is that correct?
Yeah, I actually won last Saturday, too. My second of the year. So, thank you.
Congratulations and thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is there anything further from the board? Mr. Young, this garage addition is large. I'm looking at it as, as a accessory structure. It's as large as, almost as large as this square footage in the, in the primary dwelling. It does, you've been very specific with the plan showing us, for instance, heated space on the first floor with a bathroom, but unheated, no plumbing on the second story. These types of structures are the, are the types of structures in which this board normally imposes a covenant. Do you, do you have an issue with that? Do you know what I'm referencing?
I don't just, I'm inexperienced.
Alright, so basically it would be a filing with, that, that gets to the county clerk's office that runs with the land that basically advises the world that this is for exactly as you're proposing it to us today and not for any other use. So it would, for instance, say no habitable space on the second story, no plumbing, no heat on the second story, but would also involve the, the request that you're making on the first floor to accommodate your need there.
Right, okay.
It, it does involve a filing and, and, you know, a document that has to, that you have to bring to the clerk's office. But I just wanted to see whether you have, have you, you know?
Well, I, to be honest, this, this thing is planned exactly as it is. I don't, 20 years from now, I don't know what, what will go with it, whether it goes or with the house or what we do. But I don't know if a covenant, if, if I call it something other than a proposed garage addition, that, that eliminates the covenant or I'm curious. I don't know.
Well, I don't know what, the board hasn't had a chance to discuss the application. I, in instances where we see, this is one of those instances where I think that discussion would come up. So I just wanted to get your impression on it.
I prefer to, prefer to not beacon or commit to a covenant if, you know, because it's not my property. That's the only reason. That's something.
I mean, basically, you're here for your mom now. Do you reside at this location?
Um, I do.
Or will you? You do?
I, I currently reside in the, in the, yeah, I reside there.
Alright. Is there anything further from the board on this application? Does the, Mr. Vega, do we have anyone wishing to speak on the application?
Mr. Chair, I do not have any speakers at this moment.
Alright, Mr. Young, good luck with you and your endeavors. Does the board have a motion?
Close and hold.
Motion is by Mr. Lazarus, close and hold, seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Young, if you were here earlier and we were listening, close and hold means that we have 62 days to render a decision. Most of the time it comes very swiftly after the, the hearing. And you will get a written decision in the mail.
Alright, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We.
Case number 16, Stephanie and Daniel Senta Marley, care of Woodhull Expediting, 1031 Main Street, Port Jefferson, located on the east side of Sixth Avenue, 160 feet south of Masonic Avenue, Holtsville. Applicant requests rear yard minimum and total side yard variances for existing one-story residence addition and existing garage addition.
Mr. Chair, I have Amy DeVito for the applicant.
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you and good evening, Ms. DeVito. Just locating you now, very good. Let me ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
So I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth about the truth.
I do.
Thank you. Let's start with your appearance, please.
Amy DeVito, Woodhull Expediting, with offices at 1031 Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York, 11777.
Thank you. What would you like to tell us about this application?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My clients erected this attached garage with the small addition connecting the garage and the home. In 2003, they had contracted with a contractor. I actually have a copy of their contract in my office here, wherein the contractor stated that he would be obtaining all necessary permits and COs. Unfortunately, the contractor was unlicensed and uninsured and vanished before their project was complete. They tried to make a claim against him with Suffolk County Consumer Affairs, which hit a dead end because he wasn't licensed and exasperated any of their options with court. Nonetheless, they finished the project themselves and actually were not aware that there was never a permit taken out until a much later date. At this point, we are proposing to legalize this structure along with the rear deck hot tub. And we're proposing to do a second story addition on the home, which is leading us down this path of legalizing everything at once upon my discovery that there was never a permit or CO filed for the garage and addition. The, the garage addition is located towards the south side of the property and there is a row of Arborvitae going across that side of the property, creating a privacy barrier between their property and the south neighboring property. The southern property home is actually also set back a little bit further slightly from where the garage is. We haven't had any correspondence from any neighbors about this being a problem. Moreover, I had submitted a photograph to Ms. Ratchardi. I hope it made it to you guys in time. It was a little last minute. I didn't realize you guys were closed on Tuesday. So it was submitted just this morning, where the property directly across the street has, oh, there they are. The property directly across the street actually has a very similar garage with very similar setbacks, showing that it is not uncommon for the neighborhood. And we also submitted some comps of similar relief in the neighborhood. And that would conclude my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Ms. DeVito. Questions from the board?
Chairman.
Mr. Burksen.
So Amy, the, the house addition is the, is the piece, the portion of the hatched lines on the survey that is 5, 5.8 feet wide?
Yes, that's the living area, which has a mudroom and a bathroom in it and then, and then it continues, you know, to the garage and entry into the garage.
So that sticks out. I know it's, it's followed by the garage, but it, it sticks out past the, into the side yard initially, right? 5.8 feet?
It is.
From that, what was the house?
That 5.8 feet was added.
Right.
Yes. So yes.
Okay. And then on top of, or beyond that is the garage itself, which is 20, 20 feet point, 20.2 feet, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now you say that there are similar side yards of approximately 10 feet in the, in the vicinity?
Yes, there's a, a house directly across the street that has, it's actually a detached garage, but in their side yard, which maintains just about the same side yard setback. And then if you look at the aerial in the neighborhood, there are actually a lot of houses that have what looks like additions or perhaps they were just built that way, which also encroach into the side yard. This area is zoned A1, but almost all of the lots in this particular neighborhood are non-conforming to A1 as far as lot size and setbacks.
So the, the garage, how high is the garage?
I don't think that I have a ridge height for the garage, but it is in line with the house. So.
The one-story addition?
Yeah, so it, it's in line with the existing house. It's not higher. It might be slightly lower, but I don't have a ridge height on that. I don't have full construction plans yet.
But it's not two stories?
Oh, no, it's not two stories.
The. There, there's a photo on the screen of the existing garage.
Okay. Okay. And that is from the rear of the house or the side of that, from the side of the house?
That's the rear.
Okay. I see. So the ridge line runs that way. Okay.
Yeah, it's a reverse gate, you know, the, the garage has a reverse gable, but it's still in line with the ridge height of the house.
Okay, have you had any input or contact with the neighbor to the south of the property?
They, we, you know, obviously sent out our mailing and posted the property. We haven't had any correspondence at all from any of the neighbors, including the south neighbor. I'm not sure if there's any speakers today, but they haven't reached out to us proactively and my client has not received any correspondence either.
Okay, so you've said that your, your intention is to, to apply for a second story for the house?
Yeah, it's not a full second story. It's more like a partial second story. I do have the elevations for that. If you'd like to see it, I didn't submit those previously to Ms. Ratchardi. So I, I don't, they're not in, in your system, but I can hold them up if you'd like to see them.
Well, but my concern is that the second story might be continued on to the, not so much the extension, but the garage itself and being that close to the property line.
No, no, that's, that is not the plan. The plan is to have the second story just stay on the main house area.
Would you be willing to agree to some sort of restriction so that, that there would be no application for, for that?
I, I mean, I don't, I don't see why that would be an issue. That's not their, that's not their plan.
I'm not 100% sure it's necessary, but something that we can discuss.
Mr. Burks, I'm just going to hold this up to the screen so you could see. Do you see it?
Yeah, I see the plan. I see the plans, but people change plans, so.
They, no, they do. You're, you're absolutely right. That is not their intention at this time. Their intention is just to build the second, a partial second story for area just above the main part of the home. They're basically just looking to relocate their bedrooms, you know, to that area as opposed to having them all on the main floor.
No, I understand. Mr. Chairman, subject to resolution of that issue, I have nothing further. Your guidance in that regard would be helpful, whether we need that kind of restriction here.
Thank you, Mr. Burksen. I do understand the concern. I did, was looking at the gable of the garage roof the way it was set. So I'm not sure how you want to address it apart from saying, if we granted for single, the single-story garage, I don't know that they could add a second without.
Okay, that's fine. I'm, I'm good with that.
Alright, and thank you, Mr. Burksen. Ms. DeVito, was there anything else you wanted to tell the board?
I don't think so, Mr. Chairman. That should conclude my presentation.
Is there anything further from the board? Mr. Vega, do we have any speakers?
Mr. Chairman, I do not have any speakers at this time.
Does the board have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the application.
With the garage limited to one story?
Limiting the garage to one story. That's correct. Type 2.
Motion is by Mr. Burksen, seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. DeVito.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Case number 17, Seven Screws Inc., care of Andrew Malguinera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson. Properties located on the west side of Hemlock Road, 260 feet north of Dogwood Road, Mastic Beach. Applicant request minimum and total side yard variances for an existing one-story residence addition.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguinera for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Malguinera. We can see you. I think you're still muted, though. You've previously been sworn, so we'll start with your appearance.
All right.
No problem. Your appearance for the record, please.
Yes, Andrew Malguinera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson agent.
Thank you, Ms. Malguinera. We see it, is it 24 by 12? One-story addition to the, to the, I guess, the side of the home. What would you like to tell us specifically?
This addition has existed for about 30 years. My client has been the owner the entire time. It is a bedroom for the house and has no adverse effects to the neighborhood. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Mazarelli, did you want to take that?
Yeah, how you doing, Andrew?
Good.
Oh, you said this has been in existence of 30-plus years. And the current homeowner has been there that long?
Correct.
Okay. Now, is the addition, is it, you said it's a bedroom?
Yes.
What is it? Like, what does it look like from the outside? Is it?
It's a one-story. It's just a one-story, it looks like, you know, it was an addition to the house. It was.
Right. I see that there's an asphalt pad, which is a continuation of the driveway. Is there any entrance or exits into the house from that asphalt pad area?
I have the pictures here. No, there is not.
There is not? Okay.
No.
Again, from your previous statement, it's just an addition of a bedroom.
Absolutely. And if you would like to have a picture here showing.
Yeah. So that's the side there on the right part?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, great. No further questions, Mr. Jim?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mazarella. Mr. Malguinera, do you have the ability to email that picture to us for the record?
Absolutely.
I'm going to ask you to do that for us. Is there anything further from the board on the application? Mr. Vega, do we have any speakers?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any speakers at this time.
All right, then, does the board have a motion?
Yes, grant the application as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Mazarella, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Andrew, we will hold the decision letter until you email that photo so make sure someone from your office does.
Case number 18, in the name of Lisa Forsythe. I did get a last-minute email from Frank Matola. He has to postpone to November 18th.
Your motion told over until November 18th? Motion second and middle in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Case number 19, Angelo and Marie Ciccellini, care of Andrew Malguinera. Properties located on the southeast corner, Maple Place, Magnolia Drive, Sheldon. Applicant request front yard setback variance from Magnolia Drive and rear yard variance for proposed in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguinera for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Mr. Malguinera, we see you're back with us. You've previously been sworn. Your appearance for the record, please.
Andrew Malguinera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson agent.
Thank you. So this is a pool, a request for pool variance. You have the pool primarily to the rear foundation of the house, although it has a secondary front yard and its setback is closer than the house itself. So what do you want to tell us about its location and why the variance is being requested?
Yes, so we actually had a variance, or I wasn't involved, but there was a variance previously for the above-ground pool that you could kind of see on that survey was there. It was CO'd in 2016 and for that exact location. So they have removed that pool. We have taken out a demo permit for said pool and would like to replace it with an in-ground pool. As you can see from, the pool is not a big pool. It's, you know, a little, you know, just enough to fit in that area. And we don't feel it has any adverse effects. It is setback enough greatly from Magnolia Drive where it fronts. And again, it holds the exact same setback that the above-ground pool that was previously there had. And as you can see, there's pavers all around and that's just the optimal spot to put said pool. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Wisdom?
So, Mr. Malguinera, there is a question, that front yard setback from Magnolia Drive, right? And the rear variance for the proposed inside, I mean, in-ground pool?
Right.
Is this common in this neighborhood?
There are a great amount of pools directly across the street. There's a pool as well, if you look at the aerial. So yeah, it is not uncommon for the area.
And you're holding eight feet off the back?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other pools in the area that have that eight-foot setback from the rear yard?
There are pools that have very, you know, if not eight feet right there on Hope, on Hope, Seven Hope, there's a pool with a rear yard closer. And 21 has, you know, right across the street has a similar setback that we're asking for.
Right. So you, okay, with the deck that's alongside the pool, that's going to be removed?
Correct.
How's the pool going to be accessed from that?
It's, you know, they have the pavers around it. So basically, you know, the deck was for, because it was above-ground pool. This is an in-ground pool, so we don't need the deck anymore.
Everything's now on the ground?
Correct.
And it's a 28 by 19?
Correct.
And it's a two-story house?
Yes.
No other variances you need for this application?
No.
Does this conform to the neighborhood?
It does.
I don't see anything else. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Chair, I'll make a motion to grant the application type two.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Wisdom, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number 20, Regina and Harry Caldwell, 3 East End Road, Rocky Point, located on the northwest corner, East End Road and Mahogany Road, Rocky Point. Applicant request rear yard variance for existing one-story residence addition.
Mr. Chair, I have Melissa Butler for the applicant.
Thank you. Ms. Butler, I do see that you're being promoted, but I don't have video or audio. You can. Okay, I think that's a good, we can see you now. Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Very good. So I'm going to ask you to just please give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
You just always want to tell the truth, the whole truth about truth.
I do.
All right, thank you. And your appearance for the record, please.
My name is Melissa Butler. I'm the agent for the homeowners from Butler Engineering, offices at 206 Lincoln Street, Riverhead, New York.
Thank you. And this is a request for variances associated with, and is it an existing addition?
Correct.
And you have a request for a rear yard variance?
Correct, a request for a 26.3-year rear yard variance in a B1 zone. So the required rear yard is 60 feet. This lot is non-conforming due to the lot area and the setbacks. Currently, I believe the house, the existing house is existing at 45 feet with a 45-foot rear yard setback. And we're requesting a 26.3 for the existing addition.
Thank you. This is a real lot, but the addition does not go into the front yard. So you're here for rear yard only?
Correct.
And you're saying that the setback at 26.3 generally compares favorably to the other houses in this neighborhood?
Yeah, if you look at the aerials to the other houses, a lot of these corner lots and some of the interior lots as well have rear yard setbacks of about 30, 30 feet to 45 feet. I think, I think East End Road is about, has about a 30-foot rear yard setback with an addition on it. I don't know if that addition received a variance or not. And then 16 Rock Hall Lane also has a pretty small rear yard. I think that's about 25 or 30 feet on that one, if I measure it correctly.
And the board is familiar with the area. We recognize this as one of the ranch-style homes that are common along Mahogany and the interior roads. This addition appears to be in the bedroom area of the home. Is that how it's used?
No, this is a living room addition. It's essentially used as a den. So it's an addition off of the existing living room. And behind, it's actually behind the garage as well.
And how long has it existed?
It was built in 2004.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the board in this application? Mr. Vega, do we have any speakers?
Mr. Chair.
All right, then. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, grant the application as presented type two.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lazarus, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Case number 21, Michael Boonean, 2 Indian Field Road, East Tocket. Properties located on the southeast corner, Indian Field Road and Maple Road, Northside Bay Road, East Tocket. Applicant request front yard setback variance for Maple Road and rear yard variance for proposed attached garage addition.
Mr. Chair, I have Michael Boonean.
Thank you. Mr. Boonean, it looks like you're being promoted. If you could just put your video and audio on. Mr. Boonean, I'm assuming you can hear us. You can at least start with it, trying to unmute yourself. There you go. No, 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 you're fine.
The computer froze the moment I went.
Of course, that's what happens. All right, so that we can hear you now. Are you having Wi-Fi issues?
Video, it's just, it's not allowing me to for some reason.
Click it one more time. It looked like you clicked it, it may have hit it. It goes back and forth from it, but we certainly, we can hear you. Do you have any issue hearing us?
No, I can hear you just fine.
All right. Let me give you another second just to try that audio for us one more time. All right, and we understand that there are times that is difficult to attend for many reasons, including the technology that we're dealing with and the quality of the Wi-Fi. So we can hear you. And if anytime you have an issue with the audio aspect of what we're doing, please tell me. But for the moment, let me ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney so that we can have you sworn. Very good, sir. So the board is familiar with your application. We see that in conjunction with getting permits for some structures at your house, you have a proposed garage addition. What brings you here is that you have a, you have multiple frontages at this parcel. In essence, you have a primary front yard and two secondary yards. But the garage addition will be attached to what the existing. And it looks like from the denial, you are, excuse me, 45 feet from Maple Road and there are 29 feet from Bay Road. Those, both of those roadways are open, roadways that are utilized by normal traffic, correct?
Yes, Maple is a primary road and Bay Road East is a sort of a much smaller road that about three or four houses have access to.
With the garage addition, though, the house remains centered in the middle of the lot. And again, you're holding a minimum of 29 feet to one of the frontages and 45 feet where 50 is required on the second one. Generally, do those setbacks compare favorably to other structures in your neighborhood?
Yes, there is two that I can point to that are very close to me. There is 39 Maple Road, which has a two-car garage that is, by my guesstimate, about 30 feet or so from Maple Road from the frontage. And there's also number 12 Temple Road, which is fairly new construction that has a three-car garage that is about the same, about 30, 35 feet from Temple Road, which is their front road.
Is that what you're trying to do here? You're trying to increase your garage space?
Yes.
Is the purpose to convert the existing garage and then move your garage use over a little? Or are you having one larger garage?
So my garage is kind of not really a garage. If you see where there's a little bump out in the front there, that's a stairwell that takes us upstairs. If you were to run a line straight across from there, that's actually.
That's the size of the garage.
That's actually my garage, so I can't fit even a single car in there.
So your garage is 12 feet, looks like it's 12 feet, is it 12 feet wide? Or, oh, it's 12 feet in depth?
Yeah, yeah, that's the problem.
And the garage, then the garage accesses from your driveway? So in terms of this, in terms of your proposal, where would the garage doors be? Will they be facing Indian Field Road?
They will be facing Indian Field Road, yes, where the driveway is now.
So it's not that you're going to take your cars around any closer to Maple or Bay Road to access the garage?
No, no, that's not what I'd like to do. I just want to drive straight up my driveway into the garage.
All right, we thank you for that information. Is there anything from the board on this application? Mr. Vega, do we have a speaker?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any speakers.
With that being said, then, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Grant the application.
I think that motion was by Mr.
Lindsay.
Motion was by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The record will reflect that the application is subject to chapter 78 of the code. Motion by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Boonean, good luck to you.
Great, thank you.
All right, board members, that would conclude the, all right. That would conclude the 2:00 PM interval calendar. We have a holdover calendar. I think it's in our best interest to go through it quickly now because there's just several cases on it.
Case number seven of October 7, 2020, Richard Goslin, care of Tracy's permits. 80 Terry Street, Patchogue, properties located on the southwest corner of Linden Avenue and Corbin Avenue, Shirley. Applicant request rear yard variance for existing one-story residence addition. Front yard setback variance from Linden Avenue for proposed in-ground swimming pool located in the front yard not permitted.
And this is the Goslin application, Mr. Vega, yes?
I apologize. I have Tracy Rivera for the applicant.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I also have to revise the survey.
Very good. So board members, we, well, Ms. Rivera, let's start with this. I'm going to ask you to give your attention to Mr. Doyle so we can have you sworn.
I do.
All right, and your appearance for the record, please.
Tracy Rivera, Tracy's permits, eighty Terry Street, Patchogue, New York, one-one-seven-seven-two. Just like to say hello. Thank you. I'm glad that everyone's nice and safe. The reason that you have a revised survey in front of you is after we had left the last meeting, the board had asked for a revised survey showing some topo and showing where the wells or sewers were undergrounds, and that's why we weren't able, that's why we originally wanted the application for the pool to have, be in the second front yard on Linden Avenue. The owners had some difficulties dealing with the surveyor, getting back and forth, a, a price. I guess you could say an agreed price and then the timeframe on when he'd be able to get out, when he'd be able to return it. So after that, with them being frustrated because they really wanted to get the pool in this season and not wait until after winter, I had explained to them that they would have a better application if they had, you know, looked at putting the pool in another location. They do know that they're going to have to do some like a little bit of regrading and more sodding, but they would rather do that and know that there would have a better application. The board would most likely look upon and favorably agree on this evening than to have to keep being held over on the holdover calendar, waiting for the survey to get done and then knowing that they missed their opportunity to actually put the pool in the ground this year. So here we are with a, you know, a new location, amended application, setbacks are still the same as it would be the second front yard on Linden Avenue. It's in a substantially different area and we're only encroaching into Linden Avenue by seven feet, seven and a half feet, to be exact. They will do a stakeout on the pool to make sure that it's put in the proper location and and then I think we already had addressed the rear yard addition that was on the property. I'll address any questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. I will state for the board, we appreciate you speaking with the client and coming back with a plan that appears to be more conducive or would compare more favorably to this neighborhood. I know, board members, you may not have the original survey in front of you. The original orientation was, for the pool was the length along Linden Avenue with a twenty-foot front yard setback wholly outside of the rear foundation. Oh, there you go. Okay, so, so this is, this is a, and the revised survey that we have, and thank you, Anthony, for doing that. If we bring that back, you can see obviously the difference between what was being proposed earlier and what was being proposed now. Ms. Rivera, I'm glad that you, that they determined that there was, that a pool was capable of being placed in this location and, and.
There's still going to be a couple of kinks that have been worked out, but they're willing to tackle that while they're in the field.
Very good. So we did have a full hearing on, on all of the, on the balance of the structures, part of the variance request. Is there anything further from the board on the application? If not, ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to grant the application as revised.
All right, and for the record, that's a revised survey dated.
It's the same date as the first one, when it's just submitted at a later date, so I guess today's hearing date.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Mr. Kuna makes a motion. Mr. Burke's, Burke's in seconds. It all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Case number thirty-seven of August twenty-six, two thousand twenty, Albert DeLuca, care of Tracy's permits, properties located on the southeast corner, Pecanic Avenue and Peekskill Avenue, Medford. Applicant request, front yard setback variance from Peekskill Avenue for existing forty-point-five by sixteen-point-four wood deck with steps and wood ramp. Minimum side yard variance for existing roofed over cellar entrance, rear yard and side yard variances for existing shed, side yard variance for existing nineteen-by-thirty-foot deck.
All right, then, Ms. Rivera, you've previously been sworn. Can we have your appearance for the record?
Yes, Tracy Rivera, Tracy's permits, eighty Terry Street, Patchogue, New York. Mr. Chairman, last we left off, you, you wanted to have an inspection on this property. I must have emailed the building department at least a half a dozen times. As we know, we're all living in this new world of COVID and I'm really not getting much feedback. The feedback I get is, okay, I'll get in touch with you. All right, we'll, we'll get this on the calendar. Meanwhile, time is going by, time is going by, time is going by, and I can't get an inspection date.
Are you getting, are you getting a response from your surveyor?
Yes, I actually have that. I just have not submitted it. It shows that the, the actually the, the, where the decking is and where the, the fence is, is accurate. He went out there and it was accurate. The way that I took the pictures, the way that it's lined up, so the owner of the property is going to have to do some kind of like a modification, some kind of a boundary agreement with either the neighbor or they're going to have to move the fence. I mean, the fence, the, the deck itself is a zero-foot side yard, so it, there, there is nothing that changes on that. The, the other area of the survey you want to revise was to show the gate, which I do have, but since I haven't had the inspection, I haven't submitted the revised survey showing the gate. So I was just wondering.
I would recommend that you submit the revised survey and then I'll go for the inspection. I'm certain that the building department is doing what they can to accommodate.
No, absolutely, absolutely. I'm trying to do the best I can to get that inspection. It's just, you know, I don't, you know, I have to explain. Very difficult right now.
All right, so then I'll, I'll look forward to seeing that revised survey and, and the only thing that I can give you today is November eighteenth. Obviously, if the inspection, I'll, I'll hope that it is done, but if it's not, you don't need to attend just for that case. You could, you can ask for us to adjourn and we'll be happy to do that for you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So in terms of this application, if there's nothing further, ask for a motion to hold over until November eighteen.
Almost.
Motion and second have been made. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you. Stay safe, everyone. Bye-bye.
Case number one of October seventh, two thousand twenty, Nunzio Falcione, care of Michelle Quitrally. Property is located on the south side of Bayview Avenue, eleven feet west of Cuyuga Street, Ocean Bay Park, Fire Island National Seashore. Applicant request, side yard variance for proposed swimming pool, minimum and total side yard variances for proposed irregular deck addition, rear yard and total side yard variances for proposed shed with deck. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I have Michelle Quitrally for the app.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Ms. Quitrally, we can see, are you able to hear us?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I also have a speaker on this case.
Thank you. Ms. Quitrally, you've previously been sworn. Can you just give us your appearance for the record?
Sure. Michelle Quitrally, one hundred Colonial Drive, East Patchogue, New York, agent for the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Quitrally. I know that you, you had additional photographs delivered to the office. In addition to, did we get a revised survey from you?
Yes.
All right, tell us, I know that this matter was on our calendar previously, and I know you have a presentation to give us, but give us, give me a background as to you had, there wasn't an original filing. You must have gotten an amended denial of some type which required a survey and you being adjourned, but I don't have any knowledge of that. Could you give me the background?
Yes, the survey didn't put the pool in the correct spot on the deck. And it was noticed very quick, very soon before the hearing, so we postponed the hearing to get the correct survey.
So the survey I have from you, I'll just hold up a piece of it. Hopefully, let me just do this. Anthony, you're, you're, you're showing that.
Mr. Chair, this is the revised survey.
All right, so I don't, we don't see the colors in it, but if you look at mine, you see that orange section?
Yes.
That's where the, the location of the pool is and some of the deck. Is that the portion of the deck that you're seeking relief on, or is it the entire deck?
No, just that deck, just that little triangle.
Just that portion of the deck and separately from the pool setbacks.
Correct.
All right, so, so thank you for explaining that. Why don't you then give us your presentation on the application?
Okay. My client purchased this property in July of two thousand nineteen. And unfortunately, in the morning of October seventeen, two thousand nineteen, only three months of owning this property, the fire broke out on the north side of Bayview Avenue in Ocean Bay Park.
This was, I believe that this was a fire that was, it was in the papers. There were a number of, of residences that burned at once.
Correct, and I handed in a copy of the Newsday article for you guys to read.
Is it, is that, that's why I saw it? Then, so was, there was fire transfer from one structure to another because of the wind?
Correct, and my client was not the starter of the fire, it was the brunt of the fire, though. He got a demo permit and that was twenty-B one-three-four-three-oh-six, as well as a new house permit and deck. The house and the deck, other than that triangle at least that you just showed, is not in front of this board for any variances. It's the pool, the deck and the storage shed that is on the south side of the parcel. This, as you can see by the survey, the photos that I submitted, this property is very irregular in shapes. I've also submitted for the record the previous house survey, which was dated February fifth, two thousand and twenty. So you can see what Mr. Falcione had purchased and barely had the chance to use it.
Whether, whether also, excuse me, two, two-story decks in the, in the front at that time?
No, it was a one-story, it was a one-story house.
So the house that burnt was one-story with, with one-story deck. This is, you've gotten permits for a two-story home with two-story decks?
Correct, yes.
And is the proposed pool on the first level?
The architect Glenn Graham took out the permits for the demolition and the new house. And the pool is on the second-story deck, not the first story, as well as the deck addition is for a second-story extension. Right? And basically, we're asking, the previous house had a two-point-two-foot side yard setback prior to the fire. And due to the irregularity of this parcel and requirements that they had to install that new IA sanitary field, which, as you can see, takes up most of the front yard. Mr. Graham and the owners were, you know, designed this house that would fit in a very obscure-sized lot. We're before this board requesting for the side yard relief for the deck and the pool and a rear yard setback for the shed. There really is very little usable deck space without the additional hundred-and-sixty-seven square feet of deck, and that's all we're asking for that we're requesting tonight. There's no other location to increase the outdoor space without having to come before the board for some type of area variance. And the neighbor to the west, which is mostly impacted, would be about eighteen feet away from the, that point of the proposed deck and almost twenty feet away from the point of the proposed pool. And I did speak with Mr. Colgan, Patrick Holden, who is that, a part of, part of the owner of that west side parcel. And the only concern that he had was that his shower, we would, they wouldn't be able to see inside his shower. And I do have Mr. Colgan survey. He is a client of mine, and that shower is over thirty feet away and would not have any visibility, but my client's planning to have, put on a privacy fence on top of that deck just in the area, so it would minimize any privacy issues for them or as well as the western neighbor. As for the shed, the shed is located, has a minimal impact to the south neighbor, and it would actually give them more privacy. So if this board has any questions, I'd like to try to entertain your questions.
Well, in terms of the second-story nature of the decks, you're showing us, is it, is it three-point-two? Feet?
The deck is three-point-two feet at that one point.
For the portion that you're adding, just on that point, are, are, do you have, are there second-story decks in this area with that type of setback?
We have had, yes, I believe so. We have had second-story additions with those setbacks, added two, two-point-three-foot side yard separate second-story addition for Mr. Lancer on March seventh, two thousand eighteen, case thirty-eight, and it was held over to March fourteenth.
Well, is, is this the front or side yard of the, of the parcel to the west?
This is the side yard.
Side yard of that parcel?
Correct, and then I had Mr. Palladino, which would be October twenty-six, two thousand sixteen, case thirty-two, originally from June first, two thousand sixteen, who got a two-foot side yard as well as one-point-six-foot rear yard. This isn't, it's not out of character. I'm, as this board knows, um, all of these houses, which I've mentioned numerous times, are all being elevated. In addition, the house to the east of this was just elevated. And they added, redid their decks, as you can see, is right, actually encroaches or used to encroach on my client's property. I don't know if it still does.
What is the ground floor elevation then? I didn't have an opportunity to examine your revised survey.
The first floor is ten feet and the elevation is, at the corner, there's two foot at the northwest corner. And so elevation three-point-one in the northeast corner. Southeast is two-point-three, southwest is two-point-five, and they're in a they're in a AE-eight flood zone, which means that they have to be at ten feet above mean sea level.
For first floor, so then with a two-story home, the height of the second story is what? I'm just trying to get a feel for that, for the height of the second story of the deck in the pool. Are, are we twenty-five feet off of the, of average grade?
No, I think, I, let me just, I gave you pictures so you can see what the house looks like. Get my pictures out.
I, I did see the photographs and we didn't have the chance to get them on.
Yeah, the house looks like it's about eight feet up in the air, okay? And.
So you're close to twenty-five then, no?
For the set, for the top of the house, maybe, not the, for the second floor.
All right, so, so then what, what is the second floor, eight, eight feet lower?
Well, I, I don't have the plans in front of me, but I would imagine maybe nine feet. You know, I'm sure they have nine-foot ceilings in the house. It's a flat roof.
So you're at seventeen there, between seventeen and twenty feet. It's got to, it's got to be a height of, uh, somewhere in that.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Kuna.
Approximately nineteen feet for an average house.
Okay. I don't know if they've got to see the pictures, but if you can see what, what I'm looking at here, that is the housing under construction.
Yeah.
This is the area of the requested pool. This right here. These are the, the neighboring houses, all behind heavily vegetation. This is a corner shot.
And board members, Ms. Quitrally has given us all of these. They are part of the file. We were not able to get them up in time for the hearing.
And as you can see, the neighbor to the east, their house is just as high because they just repiled it. All these houses eventually will be as high as.
Understood, but the, the, the shape of this house, and it brings it closer to the frontage, I think, than the, the, the neighboring houses. I did, I'm trying to get a feel for, this is, this house sits higher because it's, it's, it's a raised house. The deck goes at twenty feet, you know, here for the entire twenty feet, but for the section that you hear on, it is, it is at some points twenty feet, seventeen, I'm sorry, eighteen feet from the dwelling and three-point-two feet from the side yard. Are there other similar instances where, where, where these decks are, go so far into the front yard and have such close proximity to property lines?
In Ocean Bay Park, Fire Island Pines, Sea View, Ocean, Point of Woods, Davis Park, any of the Fire Island communities. These are old communities and all of these setbacks are so common. I am, as I said, I just gave you a handful of the ones that I pointed out because they thought they were pertinent to what I'm doing here tonight. I could go back to files.
Tell us about the, the purpose of your proposed dry storage shed. Why, why, why are we proposing it? At that, first of all, that location and with that, that proximity to property lines?
I can answer that. We could move that one, and I did discuss it with my client last night. I, I told him that if we moved it to the twelve-foot side yard, which would be on the west side, it would give us an eight-foot rear yard. And we're willing to change that if you'd like.
As I look at the, the plan, what I see are, are sets of stairs between the residents and the area where you want, where the applicant is proposing a shed. Is that, is, are there stairs down from the second-story deck to the first story?
Correct.
And so then they're attached both to the house and to your, 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 your storage shed.
Well, the storage shed is elevated as well, but it's only on like the first floor level. So to get down from the second-story deck to get to the shed, there's a set of stairs, yes.
So I didn't, so the shed is also, the shed is also a raised structure?
Yes.
Is there, in, in some instances, we've. Is there, in, in some instances, we've seen that the house raised and not the shed. Is there some, is there a reason why this was done differently? Or is this, or is this the common method of, of doing it?
Just so that above flood and there are items that don't get, they're, they're so close to the Great South Bay that if it does come over on a, on a surge, they didn't want their, their storage, their, you know, their outside cushions and whatnot that they're going to be storing in there to get ruined or any of their equipment, if anything, put any equipment in there. But I just want to show you a little rendering too, if you'd like to see, the board can see this. That would be the shed. Okay?
Yeah, as I look at this, recognizing where we came from, there was a, a fire that destroyed a number of residential structures. And as I look at this particular one, we are 3.2 foot off of a side yard and, and I see foundation walls around the ORI system. And I'm looking at your weird neighbor who's showing me a deck and shower on a property line. Was there in the, in the planning of this consideration as to how, how in an emergency scenario where there was another fire, one could gain access around this structure or this, the multiple structures at this property?
I don't know what you're asking about, but if you're talking about the, the setback, like I stated in the beginning, this house and existing structures are not a part of this variance.
No, they're not, but, but the structures that you're proposing to show us are holding 3.2 foot, 3.7 feet. And you have an IA system that's surrounded by a, a, a foundation wall. And you have a neighbor who is at another foot.
There is only one wall of this foundation. There's only an 18-inch waterproof wall.
So is there access around these structures to, to combat a fire if it was going to happen again?
Yes.
And how would, how would one do that? They would go on, on your neighbors' properties?
No, the second, this is a second-story request for a deck, so there is no deck underneath it. All right. So you can get access that way. The, the waterproof wall is only on the northern property boundary for the sanitary system. So you can go around that way. The 12-foot setback on the southeast, that's a standard setback. And the rear yard, as I stated, we can move that shed. And if we moved it closer, I could get an eight-foot rear yard setback.
Me, you are showing, you're showing us lot coverage at 35%, but there's, there's no doubt that your survey is a busy survey. And I just, if we're going from a one-story to a two-story house, why suddenly does the applicant require a proposed dry storage shed? Why, why are we seeing that?
You can't put storage under a house anymore. Everything's changed since Storm Sandy. Every, you can have storage, but then it's going to get ruined if you're close to the water. So they, everybody wants things elevated, try to protect their belongings. So I don't know what you're asking. I, I don't, I don't know what you're trying to get at, Mr. Chairman.
I'm just asking questions about the application. What, was there anything else that you wanted to tell us about this?
No, but if you ask me any more, any other questions, I think it conforms to the area. You know, um, I, I talked to the neighbor. The house is not in part of this variance. It's just what I'm asking for, the pool, the deck, the shed. And if you have an issue with the 3.7-foot shed, I'd be more than happy to change my, my color of the calendar to an eight-foot setback, if that helps. Because I think it can be pushed closer to the northwest.
All right. Certainly the board will, will, will discuss that. Mr. Vega, do, you said we have a speaker?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a speaker.
Maybe we'll promote them now.
We have a Paul Brinkat.
Mr. Brinkat, I see that you've been promoted. I don't have audio or video yet. Looks like we have audio. Are you able to hear us?
I hear you. Can you hear me?
Very good. Yes, we can. Are you able to, to put your video on, sir?
Uh, I thought it was on. There it is. Let's try that. How's that?
I think that worked.
That worked.
Let me just find you. Very good. So Mr. Falcione, just going to ask you to give your attention. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Let me just ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney so I can have you sworn.
Sure. I do.
Thank you. And can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Paul Brinkat, 3 Nova Court, Brooklyn, New York, 11229.
And sir, you've, you were able to listen to the presentation of the applicant here. What, what comment did you have for the board concerning the application?
Okay, I'm, I'm a member of the Ocean Bay Park Fire Department. And we think that the clearances on the side and the rear are extreme. If you have a 20-foot setback, you shouldn't be able to go to 3.7 or 3.2 for firefighting operations, as you mentioned before. That's just not doable for us. It's, it's extreme. And also to be, the prior house was a two-story house, not a one-story house.
My mistake.
All right. Then sir, so in, in terms of the setbacks that we're, that are being requested from us here, and I guess specifically the 3.2 foot for the, the deck and the pool.
Right.
What, and are those the type of setbacks that the, you on behalf of the fire district are objecting to?
Yes.
And specifically, specifically for what reason?
Okay, if we were to, if there was another fire, which, you know, may happen, if there's another fire, we could not get around that house to ladder it, to vent it, if there was anyone inside to get them out. We have to ladder the building. There's no place to put a ladder. We can't get, we, we wouldn't be able to get around the house. Not to mention the fact that being that close to your neighboring properties, it's an exposure hazard. One of the reasons that this house burned down was the two houses on the other side of the street were so close together that the initial, the initial house exposed the other house and lit that on fire. That's what started the fire. So here, this is, you're on three feet away from the property line, puts this shed and, and the deck too close to the neighboring properties.
All right. So questions or comments from board members? Ms. Ms. Cattrelli, did you have responsive comments?
Yes, I do. One, I have to apologize. I did find my survey, it was the two-story house. And it did have 2.2-foot side yard. And it wasn't as big as what we have right now. But, no, but it also had an antiquated sanitary system. And this, the house is pushed to where this location is because the systems these days, this new IA takes up such a huge field, especially when you have high water. So that's why the entire front yard, basically, I'd say at least 100 feet or 90 feet of the front yard is taken up of this IA system. So everything is pushed, right, into a semi-corner of this unusually shaped parcel. But I understand what the speaker said. And I would like to amend the application because to give it a little bit more flexibility. I came up with a, a design. If you'd like, I can hold this application and get you the, my take on my new design or we can try to speak it out to you, understand what I'm saying.
Also, there's a roof deck on this house too. So they're going to put a two-story deck plus a roof deck.
All legal. All conforming.
Ms. Cattrelli, I have, I did take a look at the photographs that were sent in on the case. I think they may have come from you, but it's showing us ongoing construction in the front and ongoing deck. I understand from talking with you during this presentation that there's a permit to build whatever structures are not part of this variance. But I just wanted to clarify that none of the construction is in the areas that you're, that you're presently here for.
No, not at all.
I think it's probably better if you could submit a revised survey. I, our next hearing day is very quick. It's the, the 18th, which is 14 days, if that, if that is acceptable. I can hold you, I can hold you over, we'll review your revised survey and have another discussion.
Mr. Chairman, can we, during the, in the time period between now and then, have those photographs made available?
Of course.
By email, you know, online.
I'm in agreement.
Ms. Ms. Cattrelli, will the, will the, these revised nature of this require a new denial?
Um.
A different denial?
Yes, it probably will, because I'm going to, I'm going to give you a little bit more setbacks than the 3.2 unless. I'm going to give you a, a better scenario and see if.
All right. And, and I'm going to ask you to speak with Ms. Riccardi tomorrow. What I'm hearing is we need to consider the fact that a different denial will, will, will or may require a different notice and therefore different mailings. You may, while I could put you on the 18th, you may not be able to.
Right.
To finish all of that in time, we would, we would have to adjourn you further and you would be on the December.
Or I could amend the application right now and tell you, I can give you a six-foot side yard on the deck with a, excuse me, a five-foot side yard for the pool and a six-foot, six-foot for the pool, five-foot for the deck.
All right. So what I'm hearing is that there, it's not different, different setbacks. You, same setbacks, but you're, you're modifying them slightly. So that doesn't sound like a new, it sounds like you can do that through, I, it appears to me that you can do that through amending of the application. I think though, I would like to consider the survey and I'd like to get the photos to my board members. So what, why don't you send that, send the survey to us? We will send out everything to our board members and hold over until the 18th.
Will do. As long as I don't have to re, re-notify.
That's her revision. Yeah. Ms. Cattrelli, and, and what I'm getting are questions from, from Ms. Riccardi. So is the six-foot and the five-foot your revision? Or it's that or your, your revision? We're trying to get a feel for where your application is going and how much time it will need.
I could amend my application.
Are you amending from the, what, from your, your revised plan? Is that you're looking at your revised plan and amending it for that revised plan? I will let you do that on the 18th. I don't, it doesn't appear to me that you have any further mailings to do. Once we see what it is, we'll have a better understanding of that. Okay? Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Is there anything further from the board? All right. I'm going to ask for a motion to hold over until November 18th.
Second.
Motion made in second, it all in favor? Any opposed motion carries, Ms. Cattrelli, I'm going to ask you to speak to Ms. Riccardi tomorrow. And sir, thank you very much for coming out. We look forward to seeing you again on the 18th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you too. So with that, can I ask support for motion for executive session? Motion in second, all in favor, any opposed? Motion carries. With that, how many minutes would you like to go into it immediately? In five minutes, more, what is, sorry?
Immediately.
Immediately? All right. So as long as we're all good with that, I will see you in immediately.
...
Looks like we have everyone?
Yeah.
His neck hurt.
Is there a motion to resume the hearing?
So move.
Motion and second have been made all in favor. Any opposed motion carries board members turning to today's worksheet page number fourteen under request for grant extension case twenty-one of January twenty-four two thousand eighteen, the name of Rosemary Pharaoh, does a what of a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Please give me one second. I apologize. I apologize.
Page fourteen.
Page fourteen, yeah, I just got there. Prior grant of four eighteen eighty is extended to expire three eighteen twenty-one.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay. Second by Mr. Cunha. All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed motion carries, Rick, your, your mic is off. Under request for modification of motion, case twenty-three of December thirteen, two thousand seventeen, in the name of Jeffrey Billark, does the motion, what have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, prior grant of six nineteen nineteen is modified to include approval for a thirty-nine point four percent lot occupancy for landing west side of dwelling, remaining conditions as originally approved.
Motion by Mr. Cunha.
Second.
Saying by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
The opposed motion carries under clarification of motion, page number fifteen, cases six and seven of June twenty-four two thousand nineteen, the name of Catharit Margot, does the board have a motion?
Chairman, I move to the prior grant of seven twenty-four nineteen is clarified to reflect the maximum dwelling size on lot one shall not exceed one thousand seven hundred seventy-three square feet exclusive of garage, remaining conditions as originally approved.
Motion by Mr. Burksen. Seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries under reconsideration of motion case ten of January two thousand twenty, the name of Biasho Barone, does the board have a motion?
What?
Does it, well, we don't, you need just put the mic on.
Okay.
Very good. We get you back no problem.
Okay, prior grant of one eight twenty twenty is amended to reflect the approval for eighteen foot total side yard and maximum height of twenty-seven feet. Remaining conditions as originally approved.
Motion by Mr. Lazarus, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries to page sixteen, case sixteen. I'm, I'm sorry, and the record will reflect that Mr. Cunha has recused. Motion carry six in favor with one recused. To page sixteen, case sixteen of January eight two thousand twenty. In the name of Robert Pellegrino, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The prior grant of one eight twenty twenty is amended to reflect the approval for eighteen foot total side yard and a maximum height of twenty-seven feet. The remaining conditions as originally approved.
Motion by Mr. Lazarus, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Record will reflect that Mr. Cunha's recused motion carry six in favor with one recusal. And to finish off that page, case twenty-two, June three, two thousand twenty. In the name of Carmella Basamo, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The prior grant of six-three twenty twenty is amended to reflect approval for an eighteen foot total side yard and a maximum height of twenty-seven feet. The remaining conditions as originally approved.
Motion by Mr. Lazarus, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The record reflected Mr. Cunha's recused motion carries six in favor with one recusal. Turning to page seventeen under clarification of motion cases sixteen through nineteen, the name of Gunther Reddaz does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Prior mitigation measures of numbers B and number ten of five two oh seven granted or amended to read. Number three B covenant required for one hundred seventy-five foot natural and undisturbed buffer shall be established along the eastern property lines of lots one, two, and three. And lot
Okay.
One hundred seventy-five feet of natural undisturbed buffer areas established along the eastern property lines of lots one, two, and three, as well as the northern area of the conservation easement shall be properly identified with concrete survey markers. Remaining mitigation measures and conditions of prior grant remain as originally approved.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to page eighteen under request for permission to reapply cases eight, nine, and nine A of February nineteen two thousand twenty, in the name of James Gordon, does a what of a motion?
Chairman, I move that a new application for two lot land division may be submitted.
Motion by Mr. Burksen, seconded by Mr. Meserella, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to page twenty. No, I'm sorry. Page twenty-two, case nineteen of September twenty-three two thousand twenty, in the name of Maria Cornitis, does a what of a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Denied pursuant to findings of fact and conclusions.
That motion is by Mr. Meserella. Seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The record will reflect that Mr. Cunha's abstained motion carries six in favor with one abstention. Finally, board members turning to page twenty-three, cases one and two of October twenty-one, two thousand twenty, in the name of Campo Brothers Associates LLC. Does a what of a motion?
Chairman, I move the grant lot area variance for lot A denied, subject to the submission of a revised surveys reflecting parcel A to be eight eighty thousand square feet in area. Revised surveys shall be submitted to the office of the Board of Appeals for review and approval, subject to all revised mitigation measures of the BZA plan dated November fourth, two thousand twenty, negative declaration, unlisted action.
Motion by Mr. Burksen, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, gentlemen, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion second, I'm a middle in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, have a good evening.
Be safe.